All right. It is 5:30 PM and I will call to order the March 20th, 2017 meeting of the MISD Board of Trustees. Thank you all for attending. We'll begin our agenda this evening with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you again, everyone, for coming. I know there are many important issues that affect many of you and that's why you're here this evening. The next item on our agenda is the public forum item. And the way this works is I think you should have a public forum form to fill out your name and then you need to turn in that public forum form to Ms. Robertson here and she will come down and gather those from you. And if, just so I don't have to repeat it for each speaker, and I know there are going to be a number of them, if you're here to speak on a particular item that's on the agenda, and I suspect all, most or all of you are that have signed up, then that's great. We can hear from you and if we have questions, we can ask those questions and we can even discuss the matter with you if we so choose. However, if you're here to talk to us about an item that is not on the agenda, that's not been posted for discussion this evening by the board, then we are prohibited by law from engaging in any discussion with you. We're permitted to ask questions perhaps, but that's the limit of what we can do this evening. Also, so I don't have to repeat it, each speaker is limited to a total time of three minutes. James Fuller will be our timekeeper this evening, so I ask you to please respect those guidelines. Also, some of you may be return attendees and I would ask you, each one has the right to come up here and tell us what they want to tell us. I'm not suggesting that you don't. However, if a speaker before you has made the very same point that you want to make, then, you know, we don't need to hear it again and again, the same point, but if you have something different to add or a different perspective to add, we're glad to hear it. In fact, we're hap- I say happy. We'll hear from all of those, even if you say the same thing each and every speaker over and over and over again, but it will be, we've got a lot of agenda items tonight and just throw that out for your consideration. So, with that, we've only had one person turn in the form, but I know all of them were taken, so if y'all will please come down front after you fill them out real quick and this won't be your only opportunity to do it at this moment, but if you have completed your form, if you'll please come down and give it to, or Mr. Jones, would you, Mr. Jones Okay. We're still waiting on the forms. I'm anticipating there are at least two issues to be addressed by the public forum speakers tonight. One is the Fasken overcrowding issue and the other is the Crockett issue. What I will do when we get them all in is I will, you know, group those in those two categories and so that we don't go back and forth between the Crockett issue and the Fasken issue, I'll try and organize them such that we hear from one issue first and then the I'll go ahead and go first with our first one and because it concerns the discussion and possible approval of the closure of Crockett Elementary, that will be our first topic. So all, from now on, the next group will be all Crockett public forum speakers and then if we have any Fasken, which I anticipate we will, we'll do Fasken next. All right, the first is Lynn Rogers. Welcome, Ms. Rogers. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. When does my time begin?
If you'd please speak up so we can hear you and everyone can hear you.
Okay.
You might have to get closer to the microphone or speak up. Thanks.
Okay. Hello and thank you again. My name is Lynn Rogers. I'm the Director of Kaleidoscope Ministries and our vision is to see our community transformed and restored by Christ through mentoring. And we do this by immobilizing the church community to establish relationships with children and families in Southeast Midland. And we are here today because we serve children and families that will be affected by decisions concerning Crockett and nearby schools. We have been doing this 10 years. This year marks our 10-year anniversary, so our founding families, our volunteers, even our staff have 10 years of mentoring experience, walking directly with families so closely that they have become their own. So we're not speaking from the outside into the situation. Please understand that and this is our family. This concerns our family. So, we're all here because we want to make a difference and please know that we are not here to point fingers. We want to be a part of partnering with you to make a difference in our community. Please consider us a resource. We understand that you are under immense pressure from TEA to keep TEA out of MISD and that the threat of them taking over is very real, that we get that. We also understand that you are under pressure from companies that have put millions into our schools and expect you to make and fix our schools and make them better. We don't expect you to have the answers on your own and that's why, again, I say, consider us a resource, but we do expect you to really engage the community at the ground level, to find organizations that are doing work in the community, to partner with them and to spearhead something bold, something new that y'all have not tried before and things that have proven results on other campuses that are similar to Crockett and other local schools and similar communities, in areas of communities that are similar to Southeast Midland, like Damian Lopez and the No Excuses University, which was successfully implemented in Amarillo, Mr. Schroeder may know of him, and Tony Evans Turnaround Agenda. So, we feel that closing Crockett simply evades the TEA takeover and it still leaves to be determined how are we going to improve our schools and our, in our community. And this is the time for us to make a difference. This is the time for us to pass on a better legacy to our children, especially in Southeast Midland. So, other factors we would like for you to consider, should you choose to close Crockett and divide the children? How are you going to address the transfer process that seems to be so problematic? And also considering the deadline is April 12. Lastly, the socioeconomic issues in our community that drastically impair student performance cannot be overlooked anymore. I have provided a, some data. I know you have seen data about our community before, but I just wanted to put it before you again. And until we find ways to engage these through the schools, no amount of teacher development in the world is going to improve our education in our schools. In fact, Crockett has improved each year for the past three years and it was publicly acknowledged and recognized at this year's MISD convocation. So ultimately, we believe that Crockett should be used to serve the neighborhood in which it resides. So, I guess our charge is to be bold, to try new things, don't overlook the East Side and let's make our community better together.
Any questions for Ms. Rogers? All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your remarks. All right, next is also about the Crockett decision. Rachel Stone. Ms. Stone?
Good evening. Well, I have a couple of questions that I would like to address and I know that you can't do it here, but one of my concerns is that you are displacing these children, displacing their parents and also the same to Fasken kids without even helping Crockett out. Instead of helping them out of the situation that they are in, I looked through some budgets, old budgets, and since they've been failing, you guys have been decreasing their budgets. How are these teachers supposed to help these students when you're not, the administration is not supporting them, not supporting them at all? So, everybody says it's not Crockett, it's not Crockett, it's not the teachers and it's not the teachers and it's not the students. It's the administration that is failing them and continues to do, to fail them by closing their school and not even telling the parents. You announce it at a Fasken meeting and the media's there. Some parents heard it through the media and not directly from you guys. That was, I don't understand how you're saying that you care for the students when you do something like that. That is just, just wrong. Another thing is, how is moving the kids from Crockett to De Zavala and to Ben Mylum helping them when those schools are also failing? So does it, how is that going to help those students? You're not going to provide any more resources, just like, it's like this lady just said, you are failing the Southeast Midland and continue to do it and think it's okay, but it's not okay. You have a roomful of people here saying, "Stop this. Stop it now and fix the problem." It's, it's, this is enough. We are, we have communities, I mean, corporations here giving you millions and millions and millions of dollars and what is their return on their investment? We're ranked 200 out of 200 and that's not because we're good, that is because we are so bad and you guys can't seem to open your eyes to this. So, and another thing, TEA doesn't recommend, it makes recommendation. You guys are going under the coattails of TEA's telling us to do this. TEA's not telling you to do this. You have the decision to do this. You have it on the agenda that you're considering it. It's been considered. When you're sending parents notice that they make, they have to make up their mind now or you'll make it for them, which school? That tells me that you guys already decided what you're going to do and that is not fair. Thank you.
Ms. Stone, I'm not about to disagree with any of your opinions, even though I disagree with many of them, but a couple of factual points. One is, do you understand that the reason why we're considering this for Crockett and transferring the Mylum into De Zavala is based on the indicators? The indicators that we have to date, all indicators are that Crockett will remain in its improvement required status for next year. Meanwhile, all indicators are that Mylum and De Zavala will come out of improvement required status. That is a key factual difference and is part of our factor this evening. And in terms of the TEA, TEA has the ability to take over the school next year and I am confident that they will do so and would not permit Crockett to be a seventh year improvement required campus under any circumstances.
Another thing is I have volunteered for years and years and I have been hearing how these schools are going to be out this coming year and we're still in the same situation. So, you know, you can sit here and say, according to this and this and this and this. It's time for you guys to take action. It's time for you guys to take action and get us out of the situation that we're in. And I know that you're trying with a new, you know, with a new superintendent search. I just don't think that this is what you are doing to the Crockett family. If you're so concerned, then let those kids under the new administration go to that school because you're going to provide all kinds of good resources for the Fasken children. So do that for the neighborhood kids.
All right. I addressed my two factual issues. I can't really take on opinions right now, but thank you.
I'll be glad to meet with you and we'll take them on.
Others?
I think there's just one more on Fasken.
Oh, right here?
That's all I know.
Okay. I've got, I've not received any more public forum speakers on Crockett. All right. Okay, then we're going to move to Fasken. I have one on Fasken, on Fasken rezoning issue. It's Patricia Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez, if you'll please come down.
Hi, my name is Patricia Hernandez and I'm trying to calm down. I have a lot of upset feelings over this whole issue. I know we have so many parents in the room that are upset from Fasken, from Crockett. My daughter goes to Fasken, she's six years old and we've had to move plenty of times already to get her to Fasken. We specifically bought in our 349 community to go to a Fasken school. I came from a low-income, low-performing school. I went to Travis as a child and when we chose the school and where to build our home, we specifically chose for Fasken. I feel that MISD is not considering those people honoring where they chose to build due to the zoning in their schools. I understand that this is a problem with Crockett and Fasken and you're saying there are indicators that Crockett will not come out of IR. I don't understand why it took six years for you to say, "We've got to do something about it." Why has a school been left for six years in IR? Why has Mylum and De Zavala been four and five years in IR? And then all we hear on the news is the administration saying, "Hey, we've given them all the chances they can have." You are displacing over 700 families with this move. Our 250 from 349 corridor, 410 kids that are at Crockett, all the staff, there's been so much hostility and emotions running so deep over this issue. We understand that there is a problem, but it has to start with the administration. There has to be changes in the way that you address IR campuses, what you do for the teachers, the support you give them, the resources. There's a reason why everyone wants to go to Fasken and these newer schools. Why is Crockett undesirable? Because it doesn't have the support, the resources that it needs. The area in it for us, it's something that is affecting so many families and I feel that it's done with all good intention, I understand, but we are in a big mess here in Midland. We need to take more action in supporting our teachers, giving our teachers on campus more ability to speak up and do what they need to do. We need to implement more reading programs for these IR campuses. We need to empower the principals to take accountability of these teachers and these programs. These IR campuses are not going to fix themselves no matter how many chances you give them and in the meantime, we're all being displaced because of these decisions that y'all are taking. I hope that you know and consider, these big booming communities, we're losing value in our homes due to all these changes that you're making. The rezoning is making everyone upset. We may not speak out as much as we want to, but I want you to know that 349 corridor is livid about this decision. Please consider those 700 families you're displacing in this decision.
Thank you to all three speakers for giving, sharing us your comments and your thoughts with us. That's all we have signed up for this evening, so we'll move on with our agenda for this evening. Next up is our consent agenda, four A, minutes of our regular board meeting on February 13th, minutes of our special board meeting on March 8th, our competitive sealed bid for district and campus professional development training, our competitive sealed bid for re-roofing of multiple schools, our contract for internet service, contract for renewed Region 20 Circuit, our purchase network and power backup equipment, budget amendments and transfers, and board gifts. Is there, board, is there any reason why any of these items should be pulled for any reason or further discussion? Before I announce that they are deemed approved by consent, let me first give a special thank you to Chris Hall with Midland Petro. That company paid almost $20,000 to our ag program for the construction of a new cattle barn and we're very much appreciative of that contribution. Thank you. With that, with that, all those agenda, consent agenda items will be deemed approved by consent. Now, agenda item number five, our district report. What's Your Plan? This information begins on page 29 of our board packet and our presenter is Mr. Horner.
Board, I'm excited to present to you what I'm calling a soft rollout of What's Your Plan. You can see the little guy on the PowerPoint there. He's our brand. He doesn't have a name yet, although I'm pretty close to him right now. We might find a way to name him. This brand, this logo was actually designed by Christian Martinez and Kayla Sanchez, two students at Lee High School under Alan Pitkin's classroom. So What's Your Brand, What's Your Plan is aligned to our district mission, to all students graduate prepared and ready for college or career. We really have three overarching goals. The first, and I kind of touched on it, was to, to brand and revise our MISD College and Career Ready K-12 Program with coordinated messages that align, and line tools for parents, students, and staff. Our other goal, one of our other overarching goals is to leverage district community resources to increase percent of students graduating college career-ready, exactly what one of our speakers said this just a few minutes ago. First and foremost, though, what we're really trying to do with What's Your Plan is really guide kids into good decision-making for not only plan on graduation, but what they're doing afterwards. So, we want all students, grade six through 12, be able to identify plans for post-graduation. It's no secret, I've made a big point about this. Our career counselor goes to our sixth grades quite often and I'll ask you, why do you believe the number one career our sixth graders have, the number one response when asked what they want to do after high school? They want to be professional athletes, yes. So we want to help guide them into good decision-making. We do believe that that can branch off into these four areas. A university program where we can get a bachelor's, master's, or doctorate. Two-year college, Midland College is a big part of design with this What's Your Plan, where we get associate's degree, but also certificates and credentials. Career training, apprenticeships are on the comeback, if you didn't know that, apprenticeships are coming in vogue again. Specific on-the-job training. We also know that, you know, many students decide to go off into the military and have a great career in the military and afterwards with both education training that the military provides. What's Your Plan is really designed after eight components of college career counseling, which was created by the college board. So I want to draw your attention to this little chart. It's something that has caught a lot of people, educators in fact, got their attention, that six out of the eight of these components start in the elementary and that's exactly what What's Your Plan is designed to do. Start with the elementary to really align resources and planning. The bulk of What's Your Plan resides on the website. Since this is our soft rollout, it's actually a live site, but I didn't put it up there. This is the front page. All of this is interactive where you can go through and explore any one of the four directions, but it also is a guide, it's geared towards grade-level resources where a parent could go in at the seventh grade, appropriate resources for seventh grade, student resources to do career inventory, interest inventories, guidance, and then staff resource to really align our calendars, align when we do things, such simple things as requiring every 10th grader to do a college essay for an application. We already do a lot with Fasken, things like that, but, but it's an organized plan on when those things happen. And the website actually has that for every grade level and every one of them, of course, the 12th grade is much more specific and much more detailed, but one of the big parts of this is the counselor's involvement. Our task force we put together are mostly counselor representatives, but I'll point out, we also have everybody from dropout prevention to advanced academic services kind of guiding the work with What's Your Plan. We also, I mentioned Midland College, but we have some outside people, including the military recruiters and Midland College guidance and counseling staff working with us to make sure we're putting the best product out there. Counselors are an important part of this, I'm going to say this right now, because the, one of the major components of What's Your Plan is every counselor meeting with every kid, ninth through 12, every one of their kids, and actually lining out career plans for after high school and gearing it towards any one of those four directions. Our timeline, I mentioned this was our soft rollout and I really am excited to show that to you. The website, it speaks a lot more to what's on there. It's not fully encompassed, it's not fully out there, but in August, we'll have a complete rollout where everything from the little guy you saw, our brand, is going to be out there, it's going to be on posters and we'll work to have it both in schools and outside of school. So that's a visual and representative, representation of what MISD is planning, working for guidance and counseling. Now, it just so happens, while I'm pulling up the next one, it's mine.
The next is, any questions about What's Your Plan for Mr. Horner? All right, the next agenda item is Instructional Process and begins on page 30 of our board packet.
And for that, I'd like to invite Don Miller to come join me. And part of this, I've asked our four junior high principals to just come say a few words so they'll find their way up here as well. So, this is the actually third part of this series that you've heard from the TNL staff on the instructional process. So what you have in your packet's pretty heavy in the board book, but the first 22 slides are what you've already seen. I will draw your attention to these four questions because what I'm going to show you today kind of gears around what you've already seen, but we talked about last time TNL visited with you about what do we expect our students to learn? That's the, you know, the curriculum, the essential standards that are, that we spend time in the PLC focusing on. Today, I want to address both two and three. How will they know they learned it and how will they, how will we respond if they haven't learned it? So let me jump to the new part. Just as a reminder, last time, they talked a little bit about unwrapping the standards, unpacking the standards, which brings us up to how will we know they learned it? And Mr. Davis has done an eloquent job in the public forums that he spoke regarding the board goals about CFA. He's mentioned CFA's specifically. So the first thing I want to talk about is the CFA itself, the Common Formative Assessment. The, the CFA really is the answer to how is it we know they learned it? It's built collaboratively by the team. It's really designed to assess specific knowledge and skills that we identify as essential standards, as part of the essential standards, I should say. We do it using mutually agreed-upon protocols, meaning all the teachers in the PLC decide how they're going to give it, you know, that you wouldn't want one teacher giving an open book while the other teacher gives it, you know, multiple choice tests, those kinds of things. So they agree upon protocols. They analyze the data and then they use that to look at for strengths and weaknesses. I really want to point out the power of the CFA and the PLC process because the CFA designed with the PLC gives them, it promotes equity for students. It really builds team capacity. It builds capacity around what strategy the teacher did that had the better results on question two, which one, what worked, what didn't work. And again, it really is a powerful tool for changing adult behavior and practice. You'll see or hear, if you go to the campuses, you'll see this quite a bit in our core classes, especially at the secondary. I know math is really heavy in this, but this is what we call the CFA teaching cycle and it kind of encompasses the questions one, two, and three, where we really start by creating CFA when we're designing the lesson. We teach, we actually give the CFA, but we have a planned-out time of re-teaching based on how the students did with that data. If, it's either re-teaching or enrichment and really I'm going to save the enrichment piece for, for another time, but then we reassess and make sure that we see where they're at. So how do we respond if they haven't learned it? So how do we respond if they haven't learned it? And for this, I want to just kind of point out a couple of things. First of all, this is my chance to brag because I've got four junior high principals, I didn't even see if they came up behind me, that have really, they've done a great job. They've exemplified what it means to empower their staff to design systems that are unique to each one of their needs and each one of their campuses. So you'll hear similarities between what they're going to tell you, but you'll also see, if you go to their campuses, you may not recognize that it's the same thing, but what they've done is they've taken the PLC process, they've had the autonomy to design their systems, to create interventions and enrichment packages that work for their campus. So I'm just going to start off and have Dr. Seibert for A Bell just come and describe the intervention process just a little bit.
Hi, good evening. Just a few things about A Bell. I am new this year, so it's taken me a few months to really figure out what's been going on in the past and then capitalize on that. A Bell already had an intervention process in place last year, so it's tweaking it and figuring out how to make it better. What I tell the staff and our teachers and students is, A Bell is really good, we just want to make A Bell great. And so working through our intervention process is part of that. The first thing that we do with fidelity, with no exception in all of our math classes is the cycle teaching that you heard Mr. Horner talk about. And so a typical cycle lasts eight to 10 days. After that, the students are assessed, students that are not meeting the standards based on very specific student expectations. And that's the key through the PLC process is really drilling down to very specific standards. And so those students will get a reteach in the area that they are struggling in. So for example, in the past 10 years ago, you know, I was a math teacher, we just globally re-taught everything. But what we're able to do is with our PLC teams is each teacher takes a different student expectation and they reteach those students on that concept. Our students that are not struggling then get the enrichment piece, which is another day, another time, what Mr. Horner said, but the enrichment piece is also built in. And then after that reteach enrichment, the students are reassessed to make sure that they have mastery before we progress to the next cycle. So cycle teaching is the first thing that we do without exception. The second thing is our team time, and you'll hear the other junior high principals say something very similar. We've built into our school day an hour every single week, so 30 minutes on Tuesday and 30 minutes on Thursday, that students will go to either receive intervention or enrichment based on that very same data that I was talking about that the math teachers do, but it's for every core area. So our students are placed on teams, there's about 150 students on a team. They have four core teachers and elective teachers for support. And during that 30 minutes, they're assigned the week prior to an area that they need work on. And so we were able to shave just a couple of minutes off of every class period to make that happen. And so the lessons that they're getting, the purpose is to make them engaging, hands-on. If you came during our team time, you would see kids in the hallway, you would see kids doing various activities, but it's supposed to be exciting and fun, but then really drive home the student expectations that they're working on in class. In addition to that, we have our after-school academies and Saturday academies. That's really nothing new, but we feel like really honing in on our team time and our cycle teaching will really take us to the next level. Thank you.
Ms. Dumas to come up, Mel.
Board, as you know, Alamo struggles year-to-year. This year, we are a fir campus and we're very proud of that. We have three levels of intervention that we are currently doing at this time. One of those is exactly what Ms. Seibert just said with the cycle teaching. I won't go back over that process again, but it's exactly what she said they do. They take the standards, they break them down, and then the teacher split the kids up and we go back through within six to 10 days and make sure that they've gotten those concepts down. Our second form of intervention is on Wednesdays, we call it SOS. And again, our team of teachers, which is our academic teams for math, science, social studies, and English, the four of them sit down together, they discuss and collaborate about areas that students have not performed well in, maybe not just in the last 10 days, but maybe just in general throughout the course of the year, standards that they should know on that grade level. And they break those kids up on Wednesdays, and all four of them take them by content, and they get 40 minutes of just pure intervention time on those standards that they didn't do well on. Our third form of intervention is built into our master schedule daily. We have about 300 kids between math and reading that in both grade levels that are in an intervention class. They get it every single day. They work on the standards that they have not developed in years past, plus the standards that they're trying to learn in the seventh and eighth grade. Kind of the way that process works this year for us, the core teams work with the intervention teachers through the PLC process. They sit, collaborate, and visit about the standards that the children are not working, doing well on, and then they try to roll those back into the intervention class very soon after they've taught that concept from their normal math or reading class. Plus, on top of that, they're trying to pick up and roll back in the standards that they did not master, maybe in the fourth, fifth, or sixth grade. The, what I call tier three, which is the classes that we're talking about, those kids are placed in there, they don't have the choice, they're in that intervention class based on our observation of them not passing STAR or barely passing the STAR test the prior year before. So on any given day, 500 to 600 kids are getting intervention in some way, shape, or form, either through their intervention class, through SOS on Wednesdays, or their core teaching, the cycling process, which they divide those kids up within seven to 10, every seven to 10 days.
Hello, I'm Shelley Haney. I'm the principal at Goddard Junior High. I won't completely repeat what these two ladies said as we work off a very similar process, but our program is called, well, let me start back with the cycle teaching. We do the cycle teaching process, especially in math, but we're kind of getting there with the other three core subjects as well. We, during the class period, my teachers do what we call platooning, where each teacher takes a skill or a group of kids based on their performance and does either a reteach or an enrichment activity during the actual class period. So the intervention starts immediately in the class period, not with pull-out or with our school day intervention, which is called REACH. REACH is the same thing that Ms. Seibert and Ms. Dumas referred to, where based on all of our CFA data, our teachers do what we like to call the draft, just like fantasy football draft, and every week is a priority week. So if it's, if math has priority that week, then you get to draft, the math teacher gets to draft first, and every student on campus is drafted into either an intervention or a enrichment activity. And we have 22 minutes, two days a week, that we do our REACH time for intervention or enrichment. I think I'm really proud of our REACH program and how it's progressed since last year when we started, but what I really love to see is my teachers sharing kids during the actual class period, and it's just what we do at Goddard now. They know, okay, I'm in math today, my teacher told me to go to Ms. Whitehead's class for intervention, and they just go, and they go where they're supposed to go, and they get to hear something from another teacher, and we've, we've had high payoff with that. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Kendrick. I am the principal at San Jacinto. And much like the other junior highs, we teach the cycle program. Just to elaborate a little bit on that, the teachers choose that essential skill, they will teach it for so many days, and the kids are assessed, immediate feedback on the data to both the kids and the teacher. They then are re-taught, and then they take another Common Formative Assessment. Those kids at that time that have not mastered the second Common Formative Assessment are placed in an intervention program that we call Summit, much like Goddard's REACH, and it is a 30-minute program twice a week. Our teachers get to draft those students based on priority, which a core subject is getting to choose that month, so they will all go into either an intervention or an enrichment. If they still have not mastered that essential skill after the summit session, then the teachers will spiral back in those skills during the lessons, either in the form of exit tickets, or warm-ups, or test questions. Every teacher has a spreadsheet on their students, and every assessment the student has taken is logged, so that they know when that student has met that essential skill and not, so they can continue to go back with those students. Other things that we do, like Alamo, we have built-in intervention for reading and math. The students the prior year coming to us who were not successful on STAR are placed in those intervention classes so that we can catch them up and make that foundation that they're lacking more strong, so that they can learn better the skills in seventh and eighth grade. We offer extended academies instead of Saturday schools, where kids will stay with us for two hours after school. We've hosted several, a total of 38 extended academies this year, and those work mainly for the most tested teacs on the STAR, the heavy hitters that we call them, that students that are on Level 3, Level 2, and not quite there yet can all be invited to these academies, and they focus specifically to help them develop those skills. We also have a one-to-one tutorial that we partner with First Baptist Church, and that's very recent. We've only had three, and that is for any student who wants to come every Tuesday after school, and they can have a mentor that's a community member, and we have had a wonderful turnout for that. Our students are in the 40s, they number in the 40s that come on Tuesday, and that's not a sign, that's not drafted, it's just kids who want to come and learn. So those are some of the ways that we, the junior highs have answered the question number three, what do we do when the student still has not learned the essential skills?
Let that soak in for just a minute.
You know, mind, I was just going to make a quick comment. That was very interesting to hear, obviously, some of the same ideology on teaching, but obviously four different ways of how to reach students. And so I applaud you all for, for, you know, obviously coming up with that PLC mentality of, you know, doing it slightly a little different to gain the same result, so thank you for that.
Now you know why I asked the four of them to speak instead of me. So, believe it or not, I do keep up with it, but I have a hard time because they tweak and they improve, and once I think I have it down, what they're doing, they go back and make some adjustments, and I have to catch myself. But that's the way it should work, and that's the way they've done a great job. I will say, and I would put them up against anybody in the state on how they've designed their PLC, their process, their teams, how they've interacted. We've still got, you know, work to do, but the, just this process last year, they're teams that really took it on that now pretty much is globally going to cross all four schools, but saw everywhere from, you know, 17 points increase on STAR to 23 points increased on STAR, a percentage pass, you know, so we had tremendous success. And not that that's, that's all that's important, because there is an enrichment part of this that we'll have the chance at another time to really touch on. You heard Ms. Dumas mention tiers, and it's hard to talk about intervention without talking about RTI. And so that's why we've asked Ms. Miller to just say a few words about RTI.
I have to absolutely say that I'm honored to stand up here in front and with these principals who've been doing a spectacular job of understanding the needs of their students on their campuses and designing a program that's going to meet their needs, and it's going to meet the needs of everyone. I'm especially impressed that they've taken the responsibility for their students' learning personally, and that fits right into our no excuses philosophy. They're going to handle the needs of their students, even though we know that not all students learn in the same way, they don't all learn in the same rate, it is our responsibility as campuses and districts to ensure that all the students are learning at the highest level possible. And to do that, you've heard lots of examples of how this happens on the campus, but what we have nationwide is a system called RTI, which is Response to Intervention that you may already be familiar with. And that gives us a systematic, multi-layered process to guarantee that every student receives the essential time and support that they may need in order to function at a high level. This applies not only at junior high, but also at the lower grade levels, where kids may have difficulty starting out the reading process, to advance students in a chemistry class that need assistance learning how to balance equations. So this really cuts across the swath of all of our students in MISD. It's heavily researched nationally, and for our system, we have borrowed heavily from the gurus of the process, Mike Matos, Rick DeForre, Richard Marzano. I have to also present kudos to Monica Hernandez, who works out of Elisa's department. She's guided the framework for MISD, for the RTI process, and she's worked on the implementation. You know that this is a work in progress. You've heard every single principal say, we tweak this on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, on a yearly basis, to make it better for our students. Basically, you've also, we've talked about the tiers. Usually, it's presented in kind of a triangular format, and MISD has turned that on its head. Tier one is the core curriculum that every student is entitled to have access to, as well as the excellent initial teaching that's going to go along with that. Tier two is obviously going down the pyramid, so it's going to affect fewer students than tier one, but it addresses the fact that at the end of every unit, it's a possibility that some students might need extra time and support just to master the grade-level curriculum. They've probably got most of it, but they need, they're missing some essential skills that we need to work on. Placement in tier two has to be timely, we need to get involved right away. We don't need to wait until kids are so far behind that we can't catch them up. It's got to be targeted, and you've heard the principals talk about, we're only going to work on those skills that that student needs to learn. And the placement needs to be flexible. We need to come in and come out as each student needs. This, again, is supplemental. Each principal has described how it's embedded in the master schedule. We don't want to lose any tier-one instruction time for this supplemental tier-two instruction. And it's led by teacher teams, which is, I think, the most important part of it. Teachers and principals know their students better than anyone else, and they can determine what needs to be taught. Tier three is the little apex of the pyramid. This is the most intense intervention that we provide, and this is in recognition of the fact that some students enter the year lacking the foundational skills that they need to function at a high level. So this is our most, most intensive intervention that we're going to provide to anyone. The whole system really requires a growth mindset, which I know we've talked a lot about as well. Individually, we need as teachers to stop debating whether a student can or cannot, or whether we think he can master the curriculum. And we need to change our question from can he or she do it, to how are we going to ensure that he, that he does master the curriculum? So it puts the onus back on us to provide that good instruction. We also recognize that we need to promise parents that no matter what school your child attends and what teacher your student has, if that student needs extra time and support in order to master the curriculum, that he will be guaranteed that through our system. You've heard wonderful things. Do you have any questions for the principals or for Jeff or I about this question three?
One thing, sorry. I think this is a great example. It's really exciting, and it shows how the administration and the staff are responding to both IR and non-IR campuses, so that we're not going to be 199 anymore. That's really exciting.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Horner, I too would like to echo the compliments. We're excited about the potential and already demonstrated success of these professional learning communities. While they began before Mr. Schroeder's arrival, we're glad he's continued to champion it with the teaching and learning staff and with the buy-in of all the principals and teachers. One thing that we're excited to hear from Rod is to know that, given his experience with it, that the PLC instructional process only gets better each and every year, and that there are some growing pains. Everything's not perfect when you implement it. The folks doing it in year two are doing better than the folks in year one, and next year, we'll be excited when all, all campuses implement it. And we're even more excited about the increased potentials have, is that we get better each and every campus doing it year after year, because they're only going to get better at doing it, and so we're excited about that. Thank you for all your efforts. Thank you for all the principal efforts, and thank you for everyone's efforts through every campus that's implementing this. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to show it to you.
All right. Next is... Next is agenda item five C, seventh and eighth grade GT review. Ms. Bridges?
Good evening. I am pleased to be here tonight to talk to you about our junior high GT program. I also have had the benefit of several contributors who are listed. All the junior highs are represented in all the content areas and all the grade levels for seventh and eighth grade. The first slide that I am showing you tonight talks about how the GT cohort is built in junior high. We start with the grade six students who were enrolled at Carver. And under PMS, we had eighty-five, for example, in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. In fourteen, fifteen, we had eighty-seven, thirteen, fourteen, eighty-four, twelve, thirteen, eighty-four. And in eleven, twelve, the year we started, one hundred nine. As you look down the columns, you will see how the cohort has changed and, in all instances, grown. If you look diagonally by the colors, you can see what happens in each year. For example, two thousand twelve, thirteen is a little bit darker blue with black lettering. Thirteen, fourteen's a little bit darker. We shift to white letters in fourteen, fifteen, and so forth. The question is, how does this grow? It looks like that we grow a lot from sixth grade to seventh grade. And I know that we're aware that we lose some of our GT students coming out of Carver. But we also gain students from the other elementary schools. Sometimes students are not aware that they can apply for the GT program, even though we send out notices in January. I'm sure you've been plagued by some of them. We send a postcard in the past to every home. We advertise it and so forth. We also have private schools. Some of them end in sixth grade, and so their students test for our programs. We also have students who come in from other districts. What happens in sixth grade is because we have a shift from sixth to a junior high, other school districts have similar programs unless they've shifted to middle school. So we lose some students, but we also gain others. The students at Carver are identified on general intellectual ability, which means they are identified in all the content areas. Some are stronger in math and science, and some are stronger in English and social studies. But generally, they're strong in every subject. Going into junior high, we identify for specific content areas as well. So a student who did not qualify for Carver, for example, in math, may qualify in junior high for the GT math program. So that explains how the fluctuations occur. We do lose students, but we also gain students. The next two slides will show you the performance of the sixth grade cohorts from Carver. These are only the students who went to Carver and then went on in our GT program in seventh and eighth grade. You will notice in two thousand twelve, we have an extra set of data. The blue is the reading scores. The orange is math. And the lighter blue is also, or gray is also math. Some of the students that year went directly from sixth grade math into Algebra I in seventh grade. The Algebra I in seventh grade students are the ones in orange. The other students may not have been students as strong at Carver in mathematics, and they elected to go into seventh grade math and then into Algebra I in eighth grade. So there's not an orange in eighth grade. Those students were in geometry in eighth grade. In two thousand thirteen, we only have reading and math scores from that point on. And it held fairly constant. That year, the reading scores were constant. And in eighth grade, the reading actually increased. Those students were taking Algebra I in eighth grade. We had a very strong seventh grade math program, and they took the grade eight STAR. I need to go back and emphasize one thing. These are the number of students who were advanced. All of the students met Satas Factory. This is the percentage of students who were advanced level in their performance. And I have to apologize. I've read this many, many times, many, many times. And two thousand fourteen appears on both of these slides. One is fourteen, the other one is fifteen. I just saw it when I was reading through my notes one more time. The top left is the real two thousand fourteen. And the students do increase in reading or stay constant. On both of these slides, you will notice that we do drop in mathematics. That, again, this is the percentage of students who were advanced level. However, they come back up when they take the Algebra I ELC in eighth grade. This may be because of the intensive change between the TEACs in the last two years. And the two thousand sixteen cohort, we have no scores other than they did well in elementary school because they have not taken the grade eight STAR.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the part about the TEACs? Is that harder, the TEA changed it, it got harder, it's more?
Yes, Mr. Marcus, that's exactly right. In two thousand fourteen, the TEACs for Math seven and eight and for Algebra I were substantially changed, where they took the Algebra I TEACs and pushed them down into both Math seven and Math eight. And so the students were, particularly in Math eight, they are actually taking the, which is what our grade seven GT students are taking and the pre-AP students. They are actually taking Math eight and taking the STAR for grade eight. And it encompasses a large portion of the first semester of what we used to call Algebra I. So Algebra I now goes further into portions of Algebra II. So that we're expecting more from those students during these last two or three years. But I believe we're up to the task.
Thank you.
I wanted to give you a brief summary of what the Texas State Plan tells us that we're supposed to provide for our GT students. The first is student, there are five areas. Student identification, and I've summarized what they say in those rules. Entry procedures provide students an opportunity to demonstrate their diverse talents and abilities. Service options provide research-based learning continuum that's developed and consistently implemented through the district. Curriculum instruction meets the needs of GT students. And this, you'll notice I highlighted part of this. By modifying the depth, complexity, and pacing of the curriculum that is ordinarily provided by the school, all teachers who deliver GT services have to have thirty hours, that's clock hours, not college hours, of initial GT training, and they obtain a six-hour update. I'll explain a little more of that in a minute. And the district involves family and community members. A lot of those regulations are fairly general. And we are allowed to design our programs in any way that meets the needs of our GT students in our community. You approved our entry procedures many years ago in the GT plan. Service options mean, how are you going to deliver those services? Are you going to have GT students in each content area? Are you going to have a seminar program and various other options in the secondary level? Many of those options are now being changed to basically what we are doing, and that is in each content area, we have GT services. The students currently are in GT distinct sections, but they may be blended with pre-AP sections. So they may have fifteen GT students and fifteen pre-AP students. Some of them are actually clustered where the GT students are clustered altogether. I want you to pay close attention to the options that we give our teachers because professional development is the key to making that curriculum what it needs to be. And these teachers participate in the PLC process and work together. And you will see that, even with that, we are required to have certain things. The district, two years ago, had an Advanced Academic Services Plan. And it was requested through a committee with GTPA or GT Parents Association that we provide Laying the Foundations, which is a very well-recognized, pre-AP-based program. But the content in those is so intense that it takes three years, and the results of the districts who have used them are phenomenal. We wanted to improve our pre-AP as well as our GT program. And if you don't have a great base, you can't push even higher. So that program, every year for the next, last year was the first year. We have two more years of middle school math, middle school English, middle school science, high school math, and high school English. Because those were the areas that we felt we could make the most impact. They will be supplemented by AP Summary Institutes and the other content areas. Our teachers are also allowed to choose GT updates online through the Texas Association for Gifted and Talented. The science director and science teachers have the opportunity to participate in the Jason Project and through vertical teams that are, will occur in all the content areas and have already begun from spring two thousand seventeen forward. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Amy Coffin and Chrissy Correo from Alamo. And they're gonna talk to you about the teacher perspective of our program.
First of all, before I start, I just wanna remind you again that we worked with, collaborated with a team of teachers from all the junior highs. We got together and kind of brainstormed what we wanted to share with you about what we do in the classroom to serve our GT students. And this is pretty much the crux of what we came up with. So you can see here that we work off a scope and sequence specifically written for pre-AP and GT students. This does include our grade level TEACs that all students get, but it also takes them to that higher level of depth and complexity. For English specifically, that includes above-grade level novel choices, above-grade level writing expectations, and also building towards above-grade level TEACs when it's appropriate. The depth and complexity aspect of our instruction is really what is most important, I think, for the GT and pre-AP students. It is not just mastering the skill. It is making it their own and taking it deep, deep, deep into those critical thinking skills that are so important. The Laying the Foundations that Judy mentioned last year, like she said, was our first training with that in the summer. And I have started implementing some of those in the classroom this year. And it has really given me the tools necessary to take what I was already doing to that next level. And I'm looking forward to the next summer training. Most teachers won't tell you they're looking forward to another four-day training session. But I know what it's gonna come out of that is good and that I'm going to be able to use that in my classroom. So that is definitely being used in the classrooms.
And of course, with our vertical alignment, we're working with not just seventh and eighth grade, but we're going down to the sixth grade and then we're pulling up into the high school. I teach seventh grade science, so my focus is on life science in seventh grade. That's my TEAC. So what do they need to know for biology when they get to ninth grade? And Laying the Foundations has worked great for that because it takes those, those TEACs that we maybe sometimes struggle with and just goes at them a totally different way. So something that, you know, maybe I understood, I could explain it in a totally different way for those GT learners. One thing that we really wanted to mention was that this vertical alignment is gonna ensure consistency across the whole district. It's not going to be, "Well, at Alamo, we do this." It's no. At Alamo, and at Abel, and at SJ, and at Goddard, we're all working to the same high standards for those students. All right. And then with our differentiation, we did give you guys some samples. There was a packet. So if you wanna look through the samples, it includes student work from different contents. And it also included rubrics and the actual assignments that we gave the students. And something that we, we all talked about when we met together was just giving students those choices and the freedom to choose what they wanted. We talked about using something like a tic-tac-toe board where they maybe have nine options and they have to choose three of those nine options. One of the rubrics, I'm sure it was included, talked about the whole total assignment has to add up to a hundred points. You can pick one fifty and two twenty-fives, or you can pick ten tens. It's up to you. It needs to equal a hundred points. So giving those students those different types of options is going to give them a little more, where they get a chance to do what they're interested in. They get to highlight the things that they want to do. Maybe they like to integrate technology. Maybe they like to write. Maybe they like to sing. That's their option there. Still going, of course, through our TEACs. We also added some projects and enrichment. And the ones that are specific on the slide, we should note that they're optional and they're going to be student-led. That isn't something that we sit down and we do in class. We say, "These opportunities are coming up for our learners. If you guys are interested in them, talk with us. We'll walk you through the process." And not surprisingly, a lot of them do participate.
Also included in our differentiation is that we have added open-ended questions on our semester exams, which are modeled after the AP exams. Looking with the vertical alignment that we talked about a minute ago, something that was missing was that expectation of the writing component on almost every test, which, if we're looking at AP and college readiness, that's what's expected on every test and every college course they're going to take. So in order to step that up, we're not only expecting them to master the skill and be able to answer multiple choice questions about it, but really create and think with those high-level thinking abilities to write and explain in their own words. So that is definitely something that has just been recently added. For GT math students, there's a one- to two-year advancement in content. And we are investigating the inclusion of algebra in the seventh grade and geometry in the eighth grade. And kind of back to what Chrissy was saying, here's just, we didn't include all the pictures of student examples. All the teachers had great ones to share. These were just a few. This was a social studies project. And the GT students, when they have that ability to choose what interests them or where their strengths are, the products that come out are amazing. Whereas you don't have to be as specific with them as you do with the regular ed student with your expectations. You can just give them some parameters and they, wherever their strengths are, they generally can blow us out of the water. So this was another social studies project dealing with social media and a historical figure. So that's very current and relevant. Students love that one. And then science ones, you could probably speak to that.
These were from my seventh graders last year who are eighth grade now. And I just gave them a rubric and told them, "You can pick whatever system. You can make it interactive." I didn't even require them to speak in front of the class because for some reason, last year, we had the shyest students we've ever, we don't have that problem this year. But last year, they were super shy, so we did a gallery walk where they were allowed to put them out. And Ms. Dumas came into the classroom that day. And so the kids got a kick out of seeing Ms. Dumas come in and check out their projects. So these are just some of them. And then this one was really interesting because it was, actually was interactive. She modeled, she had created lemonade or something that modeled urine. And she showed the students how it went through. And I think she even got to show Ms. Dumas that day. So just some different things that kids can just amaze us when we give them an opportunity.
So in the packet we provided, that is mostly teacher, how we would assign the projects and the rubrics we would use so that you could see the different choices they had and the differentiation we used in our scoring process. Next, we wanna talk about rigor. And when we discussed this, that word, we all And when we discuss this, that word, we all use it, but how would you define it or how do you explain it to the student? Because rigor is expected in every classroom, but especially in our GT and pre-AP classes, that high level of rigor is key. So we kind of defined it as the result of work that challenges students' thinking in a new and interesting way. And that is GT across the board. They're always thinking in new and interesting ways. And it's our jobs to kind of hone in on that and point it to the right thing in our content areas. Because they can go on tangents like nobody's business. But that's our job is to focus them so that they are shifting from that divergent to convergent thinking and processing. Maybe that was more of an elementary focus, like there are many different answers here. Let's just explore them all. To now, there is maybe one right answer, but how did you get there? Looking more at the process. There is definitely an emphasis on abstract and analytical thinking, which in junior high can be a struggle for them. And so it's our job to kind of train them in that transition. And we really focus on those high-level blooms with the apply, analyze, and create. We know they understand it. It's taking it to that next level of having them show us the depth and complexity with which they have learned it.
So as Amy said, we want to not just focus on the product, but also the process. So knowing the why and how we got to that answer. Everything we do in junior high is building for that upper level, whether it be high school or college or beyond. And when they're in junior high, going into high school, we get a shift from that experiential learning where it's not just about the experience, but we're actually building that basis of knowledge so that they can grow on into those upper-level high school courses. And of course, we're just going to go in junior high in general. We, when we visited with Judy, we giggled because junior high is, it's awkward. It's a weird place to be. The kids are weird, the teachers are weird. It's just weird. I mean, but we love it. That's why we do it every day. But one of our main jobs, not just teaching English, not just teaching science, is getting the kids to go from the teacher telling you what you need to do every single day to that personal ownership. Our biggest challenge, our biggest, our greatest accomplishment is getting the kids to find their own intrinsic motivators. What gets them excited about coming to school. Some of them, it's grades, but not a lot of GT kids, it's grades. We have to find other ways to keep them to where they're taking ownership, to where they're working on that independence, to where they're proud of the products that they give us every day. And that's, that's probably the best part of our job.
We do want them to, also at this point, like Judy says, for elementary, they're across-the-board identified. You are a GT student across the board. In junior high, like she said, you may be identified in some certain areas where you're stronger than others. And this is really the time for them to experiment with that before they get into high school and they're enrolling in those AP courses. You know, I teach English, so I have so many students who come to me and just, oh, Ms., I hate reading, but I'm ultimate math. You know, and I can say vice versa for myself. And it's, that's okay. And this is where they need to learn that that's okay. You don't have to be GT, AP, everything. This is the chance for you to really learn where your strengths are and how to use them appropriately. So this is just like, like it says at the top, this is the transition. They're learning where their GT serves them best as we serve them. We also, you know, across the board in all our classes, but especially with the GT student, that growth mindset is so important because they can shut down so easily with perceived failure or the fear of failure. They will just, like, just shut down completely and not even try. So it is our job to really find, like she said, that intrinsic motivator that'll give them the courage to try. And not only in their coursework, but also their leadership skills. We know these are the leaders of our community in the future in terms of the outside-of-the-box thinking. And so we want to encourage that. And this is the place to do it. Because once you get into high school, for the most part, their paths are set. They're choosing their endorsements, they're choosing their electives. They've probably already tried. So junior high is a training ground for all students, but especially for these GT students to mold not only their brains, but their character and those leadership skills. We consider that to be a privilege and an honor to, to work with them on. So that's all we have. Did you have any questions for us?
One question, this will show my ignorance. What is the Bloom's Higher Levels? What does that mean?
Those are our level of questionings that we use to assess a student's knowledge. So like, the most basic level is just understanding. Did they get it? Can you answer a multiple-choice question on that? Where we're trying to get them to write and create and really think outside the box with that same content.
A question. Just looking at your social studies and English program here, it begs the question, it seems to me, based on what you just explained, to what degree are you working to diversify the materials that these students experience?
Diversify meaning versus the regular classroom?
That plus covering cultural and ethnic achievements and materials that speak to the issue of preparing them for the global experience.
Well, first of all, that's just a sample of many different teachers. But all you have been given is the GT or pre-AP things. I didn't, we didn't provide the regular ed rubrics.
But can you answer the question?
How am I diversifying?
Yeah.
The content is the same in the skills. I use different novels with the GT students. I use different assignments with the GT students. I mean, I think it's the same across the board.
And we, I mean, we utilize that student-led, project-based learning when we're working with our upper-level students. Whereas in our regular ed classes, we would have to be going slower, going content by content.
The speed is definitely different.
Yes.
I've got an answer, but I'm not satisfied with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you. In your opinion, do you feel that the, that we're not doing a service to the GT? I mean, in, 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 you know, if you had to give it a quick, you know, grading, are we, do you feel that we're servicing our GT?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I've heard a whole bunch-
Can we do better? Everyone can always do better.
Well, I've, I've heard a whole bunch of comments here lately, you know, and, and after some of your explanation, some of the stuff I've heard, I mean, so it doesn't support what I've heard in the past. And so I appreciate y'all for your information and all the stuff they've given us. Because that student population that we're serving, you know, there's, you know, it's awesome that this can be attained for them, but, you know, it happens to be a small part of our population. And of course, every student needs to be served.
Absolutely.
But there is, there is a lot of effort that goes into this, though, to serve that, the higher end per se of the students. But, okay, thank you.
Well, it's like diversifying for any special population, just like the ELL or the Special Ed. They each have their own needs. So do GT students. And I think we're doing our job to meet that.
How, how many students would you say, Judy, that we missed? Or phrased another way, is the process that we have in place, based on your observations, that rules and regulations are rather general? How many students, generally speaking, do we miss that ought to be in the GT program?
Since the state kind of defines it as our top 5% of our district, we really hit a lot of that. We come pretty close. I've noticed recently, we're a little bit below, but that fluctuates dependent upon our kindergarten identification and the students who come in and out. Kindergarten is a very difficult time to identify children. They aren't fully developed. They haven't had necessarily good educational backgrounds. That would be where I think that we may miss some children, but we're very careful in that grade level. We have two Project Think Quest teachers who are bilingual. We make sure that their services are all provided in that area. So I think we're trying to take care of that. Our biggest problem, honestly, in my opinion, is that a lot of the parents of our more underrepresented populations in our city do not nominate their children. Our nomination pool is the base from which we have to operate. And our identification falls in almost identical alignment with the nomination pool. We just don't necessarily have all those children nominated that would make our populations more diverse. And those are the students that we may miss.
I know we have a challenge relative to parental involvement in a number of areas.
Right.
But I still will ask this question. What are we doing as a district to encourage parents to nominate kids?
In, in those early ages in particular, our Project Think teachers go into every kindergarten classroom in the fall. And the classroom teacher is asked to watch those students while we're doing a push-in lesson that should elicit gifted behaviors. And then we actually seek nominations from those parents. We ask the teachers to get the parents to nominate. Without parent nomination or approval, we don't have an option according to the state regulations. But we do push in to those kindergarten classes in particular. We also have Project Think in first grade, which allows us to look at some of those students who don't qualify initially. And we usually bring in an equal number from first grade into second grade. So we build from that standpoint. The issue then becomes whether or not we have eyes watching for those gifted behaviors and finding ways to get the parents to nominate the students. And that, that is a weakness. It's not something we don't try to do. When we talk to the counselors and we talk to the teachers and say, please, if you have a child that you believe should be nominated, get their parents to sign the form. It's not as proactive as we would love to be. I would love to test every child, but that would be extremely expensive and not necessarily any more productive. Parents have, play a vital role in identifying those students. And they have to help us because they know their child better than we do in those early grades.
The, I, I was aware that starting the school year, your, your staff was cut. So what, what is that long-term? What will that do to the program long-term? Because I understand that we're all trying to do more with, with less, but how would that impact your program?
Right now, we're making it. As, as are other areas. We all know that we have to pitch in. And the Project Think and Quest teachers have pitched in. They are now, I think when I first started here, Project Think teachers may have had two or three schools. And now every Project Think Quest teacher has seven. So that is a big challenge. So we have altered the way we deliver Quest services. The students for Quest, which is our kindergarten GT-identified students, instead of serving them on each one of their campuses, which is the way we used to do it, along with Project Think, the Quest students are now coming to Carver for two hours one day a week. And the Project Think teachers are on the buses with them to make sure they get there and back. And it's a more consolidated program. So we think those students are getting exactly what they need. We've just found another way to do it.
I was-
We're thinking out of the box.
Oh, excuse me. Are you through?
No, well, I was, I was going to kind of finish up with saying that, you know, our community doesn't realize that due to budget cuts, you know, there is a real effect to the education commitment. And, and those budget cuts have come by the decision of the community amendment. That wasn't a board decision. That was a community-based decision to cut the budget. And so every aspect of the school district is affected by that decision. So keep in mind that as we move forward, as we try to build this district better, that there was consequences due to the fact that the community chose not to approve some of the funding.
But by the same token, that does not excuse us from addressing the underrepresented groups of children in our community who have the same possibilities as GT performers, as GT performers. So I don't want us to, to get into a mode of explaining away what we are trying to do or cannot do because of budget cuts.
I was impressed with the breadth of your presentation, that you didn't just talk about the academics, but you talked about the child and the fact that they need to be self-motivated and develop their leadership qualities and so forth and so on. Just as James looked at the English, I looked at the math. And I thought the point you made about that abstract reasoning is difficult at the junior high level because you can be bright and still not be able to do the abstract reasoning. So that kind of perked out at me. So thank you very much for all of your work.
We planned that for you in particular.
And I, and I just want to add that we, you know, obviously, we've been working on that no-excuse philosophy. And so we, 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 you know, we've done a lot of work to address that. But, you know, at the end of the day, there is still some pain felt from, from having to come back, so.
Well, I think I speak for the teachers as well as for those of us in Advanced Academics in Central Office, that would be me, that we do not consider ourselves perfect. And if you have suggestions that will work better for us, we will look into it. We just want to do it the best we can for the best student outcomes. And if that means serving more students, we'll take it on. Thank you.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
What would be your reaction to our doing what we said, I wanted, we wanted to do some time back relative to moving, changing the configuration of our grade levels? Moving sixth grade to junior high and the ninth grade on to high school campus? How would that impact the GT program and in particularly enhance the consistency of our delivery system?
I believe it would enhance all of the programs. The state curriculum, the national curriculum pieces and so forth have already moved to the middle school with sixth, seventh, and eighth. And that alignment is in all the standards that the teachers are learning. It prohibits a lot of students who are not, their teachers aren't able to meet with the junior high teachers to do that alignment. And that's a huge piece in getting sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade performance where it needs to be.
I just have to comment, there are a lot of teachers and principals behind you shaking their heads if you're talking.
Oh, good.
So we really need to kill the dinosaur.
Yes.
Okay.
In my opinion. I'm not voting for you.
Your, your opinion is a good opinion.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I would, our next item is board campus reports. I would suggest that perhaps we reserve those reports for another evening when we don't have so many people waiting for our decisions on the action items. But if anyone has made a promise to a campus principal that they will present it this evening and feel like they need to go forward, we will allow you to go forward. But otherwise, I would suggest that we wait for-
I was on, I was on spring break.
All right, I don't hear an objection. So with the board's permission, we'll move on. The next two items are 5E, list of bills, begin on page 73 of our board- board packet, and 5F, Financials, which begin on one oh eight of our board packet. Are there any questions or discussion about any of those two report items? All right, hearing none, we'll now move to our action items. 6A, Discussion and Possible Approval of Instructional Materials Allotment TEAC Certification for 2017-18. That information begins on page one fifteen of our board packet. Is there a presenter on this?
I just wanted to make sure that you knew that, um, all the instructional materials that we're looking at for the next school year do comply with a hundred percent of the TEAC certification. So that's what, uh, letter A is representing. I think you have a memo possibly from Kim O'Connor-
Yes.
-in your packet.
The reason for this is an action item is that TEA requires that all districts certify that their curriculum complies with that, with those requirements.
Correct.
Correct? All right.
Move approval.
Motion by Ms. Nicholson, second by Mr. Fuller. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. If unanimous, thank you. Next item, 6B, Discussion and Possible Approval of LOT and CTE Textbook Recommendations.
Um, again, about textbook adoption. Uh, this year, we're in proclamation seventeen eighteen to adopt LOT, Languages Other Than English, and CTE Career and Technical Education Resources for next school year. So in your packet, um, you have recommendations on behalf of the textbook committees that were selected early in October, have been reviewing resources, uh, to ensure that they meet the needs of our kids and our teachers in covering all the TEACs that are state certified. Normally, this is an item that comes in April. We wanted to get it, uh, to the board in March so that we can start ordering materials in April, provided, um, the board approves these selections from the textbook committees.
All right, the list of the, uh, career technology education books are on pages one seventeen and one eighteen of our board packet. And the Languages Other Than English textbooks are on, uh, page one nineteen of our board packet. Are there any questions about any of those materials? All right, this is an action item.
For their approval.
I'll second. I didn't hear that. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Murray. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. If unanimous, thank you.
Thank you for the support, Board. Teachers serve on these committees and really look through the resources to pick what's best for their, for them and their students. So thanks for the support.
Thank you for all the work. All right, next agenda item is 6C, Discussion and Possible Approval of 2017-2018 Board Meeting Schedule. We have a hard copy and also on page one twenty of our board packet. Uh, I'm assuming that all of these board meeting dates are on Tuesday. Is that correct? Tu, I mean, Monday evening? Monday? All right, it has been suggested, or it's, it's been suggested that we consider returning to our Tuesday night meeting schedule. Uh, if, if you'll, well, for the new board members, we will, I will, I will tell you and remind the veteran board members that we changed that from Tuesday night as our regular meeting night to Monday night to accommodate, uh, some folks on the board administration that had school activities that occurred on Tuesday night that they wanted to attend. So we moved it to Monday night. But it's been suggested that those reasons may no longer exist and that we might consider Tuesday night as a more convenient evening. I'll just throw out that for discussion. Uh, as an alternative to this, I guess we would add a, a day to each of these dates. I don't know if there are other ramifications that you have to consider.
We need to do a motion for policy change in the meeting date.
Oh, you'd have to change policy?
We would.
Okay. All right, well, we can-
So we need a motion?
Yeah, we can still discuss adopting this particular calendar and keeping them on Monday night this evening. And if the discussion goes that we'd like to consider, consider at least Tuesday night, then we can, uh, not vote on this this evening and take it up next month where we could consider both a policy change and a vote on the calendar itself.
Correct.
Mr. Bishop, would you like, you, you reminded me of this. Would you like to go first?
Yes, I would. I, I was one that, uh, brought it to the table on, on the consideration. Uh, and one of them was, I know we had, we had in the past have done, have, we used to have them on Tuesday nights. And one of them is, is to consider going back to that. And I don't know what, uh, what kind of hindrance or crutch it would put on, on the administration as, as far as preparing, uh, for the board meetings, as far as getting them that extra day and/or to actually move it back, uh, to Tuesday, uh, Tuesday evenings when we, when we previously had the board meeting. So that was just a, uh, just a suggestion. If the board chooses not to, uh, I could live with it either way, but it was just a, a suggestion, so I'd put that on the table.
Is, is it fair to say that you would prefer Tuesday night?
Yes, sir.
For that reason?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other con- It makes no difference to me. All right, because, okay.
I was gonna add right at that, is there any preference from staff as to how we're affecting them from a Monday night meeting night option?
I tell you, you won't be affecting me at all, whichever night you choose. I, you know, I don't know that, I haven't asked them, okay? To be truthful with you, but I, I will tell you this, do not have a Monday night meeting after spring break. That's one thing I do know. We don't need this because it was a scramble today to try to get ready. So that being said, Tuesday night does give them money to prepare, um, for anything, so. Patrick may have a, or James may have a, its opinion about that. You agree? Tuesday? You agree? Okay, all right. We appreciate that. All right, well, with that discussion and that, uh, confirmation of the reason, we will, I suggest that we, uh, not vote on this this evening and we will table it, so to speak, and it will appear as an agenda item for changing, uh, policy to accommodate a Tuesday night change in the calendar that will accompany that. All right? Any objection to that? Anybody otherwise want to move forward with a motion to vote on it tonight? Okay, good. All right, we'll move to, uh, 6D, Discussion and Possible Approval of AE Local and AE Exhibit. But, uh, we'll limit ourselves to AE Local this evening. Might have to do some work on the AE Exhibit to make sure it's a hundred percent typographically correct. Uh, so let me, uh, this action, and for the benefit of everyone in attendance, if you're not familiar with, uh, the vocabulary of our policy, uh, the Lone Star Governance Materials that we've been working on that deal with our mission, mission and vision statement, student outcome goals, student, uh, goal progress measures, the role of the board, the role of superintendent, uh, superintendent constraints, board constraints, uh, and a monitoring calendar and a self-evaluation calendar, uh, all make up what we call our Lone Star Governance Materials that we've worked, uh, with the teaching, learning staff to initially create. And then we've also rolled it out to the community in four community meetings and also gotten feedback online. Uh, we have reviewed, uh, all of the comments and all of the feedback we've received. And so the purpose of this evening is to give us an opportunity to take into account that feedback and decide whether any changes should be made based on that feedback to our initial draft and hopefully to adopt that as our AE Local policy in its totality going forward. So that's what this item is about.
Move approval.
Motion by Ms. Nicholson, second by Mr. Fuller. Any discussion? The discussion, I would say, is that we got very, we, we had a lot of questions that we tried to answer. Uh, the comments and the feedback we got were very, very positive, very encouraging, very supportive. Uh, and we're grateful for all the folks that took time out to read the materials. They're lengthy, they represent a lot of work. We hope that will allow us to make transformational change in this district going forward, be more focused on student outcomes, laser focus, I'd like to say it, and to adopt, adopt plans of action called theories of action going forward in effort to achieve all of those things. The one change that we've made, as reflected in this AE Local from what we presented to the community, and it was on the basis of some feedback, some grammatical feedback, is on our mission and vision statement, uh, it provided that, uh, all students will graduate, initially provided, all students will graduate prepared and ready for college, I'm sorry, prepared and ready for college and career. Uh, it was noted grammatically that, uh, that makes it sound like you cannot pursue your career until you're also ready for college, or that you had to go to college and then pursue your career. There are any number of comments we got like that. That was not our intention. Our intention was that we want every student to have that choice, that they be prepared for, to go immediately into career if they so choose, or immediately to college if they so choose. It is our responsibility as a district to prepare them for either of those choices. And so, uh, that was a, a, a change that we made based on the feedback that we got. Other than that change, I think that everything else that, uh, we presented to the community was met with, uh, without any constructive criticism, uh, at least not enough to cause us to change it. And so that's why the motion's been made. Any other comments or discussion about this before we vote?
Hey, Rick, I would like to, uh, just note our teacher and learning staff, how much effort went into this on their behalf, and we appreciate every minute they spent with us, every, every extra weekend and, uh, night that they spent with us because they did a lot of, uh, really hard work and we appreciate your effort.
Well, and I could elaborate, not just the time they spent with us, but all the extra time they spent not with us to do even more. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank y'all very much.
And, um, it was, the, the educators were very instrumental in putting, you know, good numbers, attainable numbers. And, uh, so as board members, uh, one of the public meetings, I said that, uh, it wasn't per se my job to teach the kids, you know, and I saw some frowns out in the crowd. But what I meant by that was that as the overseer, uh, or one of the overseers, it's, uh, our job, I feel, is to, uh, collaborate with our community and try to find the best solution for, for the problem at hand. But the professionals are, it's their job to educate those children. And there's a lot of good professionals that we have that, uh, that, that's what they're doing. So, um, I just want to applaud them for all the hard work they put into, to this with, with us, uh, on this document.
Yeah, the last thing I would say is that the overriding theme that we've come to adopt as our own is that student outcomes don't change unless adult behaviors change. And, uh, our work on this reflected our effort to model that ourselves. And the student outcome goals that we've set, uh, will require adult behavior change on behalf of all of us, from the school board to everyone involved in the academic learning process. So, uh, we, this will be a challenge and we look forward to challenge. We embrace that challenge because we need that challenge. We need that adult behavior change and we believe they're reflected in these materials. With that, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. All right, Action Item 6E, Discussion and Possible Approval of the Closure of Crockett Elementary at the End of the 2016-17 School Year. The information begins on page one thirty-one of our packet.
I, uh, last week, based on a, a question from a concerned citizen, spoke to the Commissioner, Commissioner Morath of the TEA about really what, what would happen if we took no action? If we just tried for year eight to be better? And basically, he told me that's probably not going to happen. There are four things that the, the Texas Education Agency could do. They can replace the entire school board, they can, uh, manage Crockett by itself, they can pick somebody else to manage Crockett, or they can, uh, pick somebody else to manage the entire school district, just based on Crockett. And, uh, this concerned citizen was thinking, well, if TEA came in, it would save the taxpayers' money. Well, in each of those instances, uh, it does not say that the school district and the taxpayers still fund a hundred percent of any of those endeavors. So that doesn't do any good. But, uh, I, I want to be proactive. Uh, we've had the markers, they're, Crockett's not going to come out this year. And if we don't do something, then we're not going to be in control of our students and our school campuses in, uh, Middle and Independent School District. So I'd like to move that we close Crockett at the, uh, end of the school year this year and so that we can decide the fate of the students and the campuses and not Texas Education.
I do have a question.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy.
I do have a question.
Well, we, if we can get a second, then we'll have discussion and-
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Murray. All right, Mr. Bishop.
I guess my, my, my question is, what, what were the, uh, what were the parents, uh, the students, and the teachers at Crockett told at the beginning of the school year? Were they told, what were they told as far as the academic status? I mean, I know they were told that the campus was, was in IR status, but were they told they were, they were going to be given an opportunity, uh, from an academic standpoint to turn the campus around? Were they given a timeline? Were they told anything like that?
The, um, I think, are you talking about what TEA told them?
Uh, yes, or what did our administration tell, uh, that campus that, that they were going to be given a timeline to turn? I mean, I know we've been in academic, uh, uh, IR status for, for several years, but were the parents and the teachers, the administration at that campus, were they told that they had a certain amount of time, given another opportunity to turn at a certain period of time? Or there's, or there was going to be something done from our side of it or from TEA's side of it?
Well, I don't know what was said last year, um, but I do know that, uh, TEA, uh, there was some confusion. Uh, TEA had mentioned a two-year plan, uh, but I personally checked on that and that was not, uh, the intent of guaranteeing two years. Uh, I just want to give you some evidence. Houston Cashmere, uh, was a six-year IR campus last year and they did not make it. So they went to the seventh year, starting this school year, and TEA appointed a conservator to take them over. And they only missed it by two students. Commissioner Morath is very serious about reducing the number of IR campuses in this state. In fact, he testified at his confirmation hearing that he wants to reduce those fifty percent. So they're serious about this. Uh, I think they would look at being on IR for six years is too long. And I, I do know that personally because I've talked with them several times about this, both, uh, Commissioner, or Deputy Commissioner Crable, who will make the call, and of course, the, uh, the liaison that works with, from TEA, works with Crockett. We had high hopes that Crockett could pull out of it and we were very optimistic, but those leading indicators began to flatline, uh, this spring. And, uh, that caused us concern. Now, I want to make a statement about the Crockett staff. The Crockett staff love those kids and they also care about them. They provided safety for them. But unfortunately, we are not getting the academic results that, that we need. And so with these leading indicators flatlining, uh, the, this district is in very serious jeopardy of having TEA appoint a conservator. It will happen. I'm just confident that it will if, uh, if, they, they won't let them go a seventh year. Now, I visited personally with the staff. It was a tough meeting. I hated to be there. I mean, I love the staff, but it was a tough message to deliver. Obviously, they were distraught, uh, over the, the, uh, content of what I delivered to them. I also had a parent meeting. Uh, there was a mention of, of the parents hearing the- I also had a parent meeting, there was a mention of the parents hearing this from the Fasken presentation, and that is true, but here's the timeline that perhaps people don't know. I only got approval to share that, what we call Option Four, with the Fasken parents, assuming Crockett would be closed that day, the day of the Fasken presentation. So there was no time to talk to the parents at Crockett prior to that, because we had to talk to the Fasken parents also. So there were some timing issues here, and I understand the confusion, but we also had a meeting then with the Crockett parents. I think it was, we talked on Wednesday to the staff, and then the following Tuesday, we had to call a parent meeting. So both groups were, were given that information, and I presented it to both of them.
I don't want to short circuit the, I don't want the motion itself to cut off any other information that you, Mr. Schroeder, or the teaching learner, Ms. Cale, want to provide as part of the information they have provided to us. I don't know if there's anything y'all would like to highlight at this time, or emphasize at this time.
Well, I've sort of told you what I think will happen, I'm really confident that it will happen, based upon, again, multiple discussions with the agency. We've tried to figure out what could be best done for Crockett. We know that it's best to have neighborhood schools, or at least schools close to your home, and so, Mr. Riggins' group designed a line that cuts through the Crockett zone, attendance zone, and takes the northern part of those, that zone to Mylum and the southern part to Dezavala. Fortunately, as far as space goes, there is capacity at those campuses to handle that separation, or that reassignment, and still be under the 95% or at the 95% capacity level which we used in our design. So we have the capacity there. The, if the board moves forward with this motion, there will be a transition team that will be established, Patrick is going to lead it, and Patrick can talk a little bit about the transitions that he has planned. We also have the PSP, what they call PSP, can't remember the initials of what it means, I've called them.
Principal Service Provider.
Professional Service Provider, okay, that works with TEA, and she's here, of course, Elise can answer questions, Elisa Neighbors is here, she can answer questions with regards to the performance that we're seeing right now. By the way, all this data is going to TEA, and they're seeing the same data. They've, they have visited with us in September, in fact, they brought a team out here to visit, and then they are receiving updates regularly and having conference calls with the Crockett staff. So there's been a lot of contact, they know a lot about what Crockett's doing right now. But Patrick might want to speak quickly about the transition, so that you would know something about that.
Rod, before Patrick.
Go ahead.
Before Patrick speaks, I think we need some clarification here. Based on what some constituents have asked me, when we use the term "close Crockett", are we talking in terms of closing it, shutting the doors, putting the padlock on? My response to them has been, no. Now, there's a issue here that I think the administration needs to explain relative to the introduction of a conservator into this process. Comment on that relative to the law.
The, this really occurred with Houston-Kashmir. Houston-Kashmir's seventh year had to be addressed, but the agency did not want to go in necessarily and take Houston ISD Board, because they have multiple campuses. So they used a provision in the law to appoint a conservator over the campus, and that conservator basically takes control of the campus, and the control is removed from you as a board to that conservator, and whatever that conservator says is what happens, and you basically serve that conservator and follow the conservator's dictates on what happens. That conservator, in Houston-Kashmir's experience, situation, and I'll speak because I know about it, that conservator is, has the opportunity or the power, the authority, to close a campus after this year for Houston-Kashmir, if they feel like it's not going to make it. I think that conservator has chosen to give that campus over to a third-party vendor to manage. If I read and remember my article correctly, that's what's going to happen, but the conservator has control of that campus.
Who is that third-party vendor?
Well, I don't know in this particular case, but it could be a KIP, it could be, you know, a charter, somebody like that, anybody that's in that kind of business. I just don't know who it is. But the conservator basically is running the school, managing the school, and the authority of that school is removed from you to that conservator.
I wanted to comment, I know the timing of your conversations with TEA were challenging, but I wanted everybody to know that Rod was late to the Fasken meeting, because he, the only thing he could do was to talk to the faculty, there wasn't time to talk to the parents because of the timing, but he was late to the Fasken meeting because he did have the obligation, he felt the obligation to at least talk to the faculty, and so, it wasn't like, it was just willy-nilly decided, so thank you for that.
Is there any way we can have a, before Patrick speaks, is a timeline of the events that have taken place? I mean, because obviously, the community has, not everybody is aware of all the steps or measures that we're taking, or taking, you know, up to this point. I don't know, do you want to speak on that?
Let's let Elise talk to that, because Elise works with these IR campuses directly.
Six years ago, Crockett went into its first stage of improvement required. Then in 2012, 2013, Crockett went under a reconstitution which was approved by this board, which included changing the leadership staff at that campus and some of the teachers. In 2014, 2015, continuing its an improvement required status, again, it went into reconstitution. This time, the reconstitution addressed more of specialists, a math specialist on that campus with a math focus. And then, as you know, last year, significant improvement was made at Crockett, and unfortunately, this year, that improvement is not being evidenced in the leading indicators that we have at this point. So next year, they would indeed be in their seventh year of improvement required.
And this whole time, there's been communication with the TEA?
Yes, sir. This entire time, all plans are approved by, are approved by the board, sent to TEA, and quarterly reports are provided to TEA, as well as ongoing communications between Mrs. Henderson, the PSP, and TEA, our staff, and TEA. This is the first year TEA is really involved with the campus principal as far as those discussions, but I believe they've been out twice to visit Crockett in the last six or seven years. Right. This year, it's been every six weeks, there's been phone calls.
That's a very important point that you make, because the philosophy changed with the change of the Commissioner.
Major philosophical, major philosophical change.
There was what I would term a hands-off approach to what was going on, and that's why we're where we are, to some great degree, at this, at this time. Go ahead, I'll comment later.
That's the historical timeline?
Thank you. I had an opportunity to meet with Commissioner Morath in November, as he was traveling through the area, and this discussion came up about failing schools, and I sat there and listened to him, and he's, when you visit with him, you can tell that he's dead serious about, about education, and he's dead serious about not serving the kids in any community. So, you know, the, some of the comments have been made, and emails have been sent, indicate that we got to this point with Crockett last week, or at the beginning of this year, but unfortunately, as you heard the timeline, that situation has been looked at for six years now. And this is probably one of the most troublesome decisions I've ever had to make, and, you know, we sometimes put things in a box and narrow it where we think we can't get out, but when you ask yourself about the education of kids, and we, we must do everything possible to try to advance their education, that's what we're here for. So, the no-excuse philosophy, the adult behavior must change, that, of course, I've kind of lived that in my past, in a different circumstance in my life, but, you know, change is not easy. And, you know, we, we currently have 1,800 kids that live on the other side of the interstate that don't have a neighborhood school, and they live with those challenges every day of having to travel to, to a non-neighborhood school. And, you know, I realize that was probably their choice to, to move over there, but their population growth has grown for a long time over there, and we can, we can sure come up with a lot of things to say about why, you know, that current situation exists, but I would like to also to say that in the past, as issues have come up, I've spoken many times in front of the board, and believe me, sitting on that end, I think I've, I think I feel like I've lost most of the times I've approached the board, but yet, that did not deter me from, from trying to serve my community. So I could, I could have used it as a crutch, not to serve, but I've elected otherwise. And so, you know, my philosophy is simple, education has to be the priority for our kids, and we all have to make tough choices, but education is the primary thing that we're, what we're here for. In 2002 or so, I was involved in another deal back then, and I remembered that there was a part, part of the community that wanted me to, to help them fight their cause, but I remember the first word that came up was, "We want you to help us because our property values are, are going to be affected." And, you know, I had to decline the offer, because I, I remember my response was, "Well, I'm not here for property values, I'm here for the kids that have to get on buses at 6:30 in the morning," and that's my, you know, so tough decisions got to be made, but, you know, I don't think those people thought that they could see the light of day, but I think with time, they were able to heal up and move on, but, you know, when you constantly got to say to yourself, "What am I focusing on?", the core question has to be, are we educating, and are we doing the best to educate?
Any other, Mr. Jones?
Our transition team that will continue this work, if the board chooses to close Crockett, will be working very closely with our HR department, because TEA has some criteria when you restart, when you close and restart a school. Some of those things include having a new principal.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Excuse me for interrupting, but would you repeat that again? Start, restart?
If the board chooses to close Crockett, TEA defines it as a restart, and there are some criteria that comes along with that, such as new principal, new assistant principal, new counselor, and new third through sixth grade teachers. So we would work, this transition team would work very closely with HR to transition teachers that are currently at Crockett to other campuses. Some would go to Mylum, some would go to DZ, but some would also go across the district and other areas as they go through the transfer process. The K through second grade teachers would be evaluated and interviewed by the new principal and the administrative team that would, that would take over and lead that campus and make those determinations for that campus. But we want to remind everyone that TEA has criteria. If you're going to restart a campus, you must do these things. But as far as the, the family members, the MISD family members that are currently at Crockett, we want them to know that if the board chooses to do this, no one will lose their job because of the restart process that we're going through. And we would work very closely with Mylum and DZ, as they increase their student population, they would of course require additional instructional staff to meet the needs of those kids, so we would work very closely with them to ensure those positions are in place as well.
Will that instructional staff come from Crockett?
Well, that depends. Some of the team members at Crockett could find themselves at DZ, they could find themselves at Mylum, but they could also find themselves at any other campus in the district where there's an opening.
Well, will the criteria for selecting them or moving them to another campus be rigorous, given the fact that they failed at Crockett?
The campus administration for DZ, Mylum, and all other campuses will play a huge role in selecting those individuals that will be transferred to their campus, and yet, so yes.
I ask that question because that's one that parents and constituents in my district have asked, why send those same teachers to another campus when they've not succeeded on the previous campus?
Let me make a couple of other design issues or suggestions. We're going to look at the title money. I want to put campus-based instructional coaches at Mylum and Dezavala, so that they can provide support to the teachers, and we're working on the title budget to do that. So that's going to be an enhancement to those two campuses. Secondly, TEA is going to require us to follow every Crockett student to ensure that they are going to be successful. So we've got to develop systems to do, to do that very thing. And third, I just had a great conversation today with the Warren Charitable Trust, our foundation, and they are interested in partnering with us for these Crockett students at Dezavala and Mylum. And so they will be coming alongside of us as a partner in providing perhaps a resource, or at least resources to employ a counselor, or a counselor-type of person who will work with the students and the parents of those Crockett staff. So we're trying to provide support beyond what has been provided in the past.
I would go on to say that the transition team that we're talking about- I would go on to say that, that, uh, the transition team that we're talking about will work very closely in that respect, utilizing the Title I funds to provide that additional instructional support to Ben Mylum and, uh, DZ as well. And they will address things like intervention, uh, enrichment, attendance, grades, and parent communication.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones?
Anything special about the new administration at Crockett that you're gonna do to help, uh, help ensure their success?
The, uh, we will go through a search process, uh, to find the best, uh, principal, uh, to meet the needs of, uh, if you choose to close Crockett, uh, the new campus, um, um, to help establish a new name, a new culture, a new mascot, new colors, and to work very closely with, uh, the parents of, uh, of, uh, of the new students that will be housed out of that campus.
The cultural training for the?
Um, we've been very blessed, um, over the last month or so. Uh, Central Office has been, been very blessed to participate in some training, um, thanks to the Millen Memorial Hospital, um, called Culture of Ownership. Um, I think it was a week before spring break, our, um, we wrapped up, uh, the, uh, large portion of the training. We still have about ten individuals at Central Office that still need to be trained. This particular, uh, training focuses on core values, uh, with a, with a concentration on the action behind those core values. Um, you know, the, the training talks about transforming people through values and transforming organizations through the power of people. As I'm sure you would agree, um, any organization, um, succeeds and/or fails uh, based on the productivity of the individuals, uh, behind the organization. Um, Central Office embraced this core value training uh, because before we could influence, uh, the campuses, we must first look in the mirror before we look out the window and reflect on what can we do differently. So we're hoping that the training that we've gone through, uh, in partnership with Millen Memorial, uh, will help our customer service. It will help our parent communication. It will, um, it will help improve, uh, uh, employee morale. And if you have improved, uh, employee morale, of course, you have, uh, improved, um, um, outcomes. Um, we-
My understanding though, that the whole new staff was gonna go through the training before school starts.
Absolutely.
That's not this issue. This is Crockett. You're on Crockett right now.
So we, we are very pleased to, for the partnership we've had through, uh, Millen Memorial and, uh, the training that we received at no cost, uh, to the district. Um, and we think that the Central Office will benefit from that as we work very closely with the campuses.
Um, I don't know who can speak to this, but who, so how many people have left, um, uh, Crockett already?
Our, our best indication data tells us that, uh, there are five hundred and some kids in the Crockett zone. Thirty-eight percent of them have chosen to leave Crockett.
Thirty-eight percent of the people have, um, obviously to the condition of school, have decided to leave already?
What'd you say?
Uh, meaning, meaning-
You can't base that on that. Those are multifamily homes. Some families live with grandparents and aunts and uncles, and then once they find a home, they move to a different district. Can't base that, thirty-eight percent totally, that they chose to leave versus they moved to a different home.
What, what I think, um, what's being said is thirty-eight percent-
Wait, wait, before you answer, hold on, let me, Mr. Fuller asked you to elaborate on your answer and that, so thank you for doing that. But I do not want to start a, uh, this evening, I do not want any audience participation, if you will. Uh, the public forum moment has ended and, uh, we're, it's for the board to decide with the input. Uh, we've got the public input, not just this evening. Promise you, not just this evening, but I don't want this to turn into a, a back and forth. I think that would make for what could be an unreal meaning. I don't want that. No one wants that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Jones?
Thirty-eight percent of the students living in the Crockett attendance zone, um, they've made a decision, um, uh, to choose another campus or another route, uh, to meet their educational needs, whether that is, uh, going to, on, on a transfer to another campus within MISD, whether that's homeschool, whether that's going to private school. But thirty-eight percent of the kids living in the Crockett zone do not attend, currently attend Crockett.
And that's been over the last six years or more recently?
Recently. I'm not sure about the number of these. Do you know that number?
You have any other information like this, consider Mr. Jones, or any questions for Mr. Jones?
No, this is, this is specific to the most, most current data, which is the thirty-eight percent.
Any other information you want to provide us, subject to additional questions from us?
No, sir.
No, I was gonna, I did, but I lost my train of thought there for a second.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Jones?
So, Mr. Jones, to make sure that we're on the same page, restart, given the law, just explain. Restarts mean that Crockett will reopen?
Let, let me speak to that. These, these two issues are really separate and, and we've gotta keep them separate. We're really talking about Crockett right now. Uh, if Crockett's leading indicators were positive, we would not be talking about Crockett. What happens with the building is another issue. Okay, so we-
I'm talking about campus.
Yeah.
I'm talking about students.
Well, if, if you close, the students will need to move to another school. That's what closure means to TEA. But I hear us getting a little twisted with a restart component. And that restart component is not about this item, agenda item. This is only about the closure of Crockett.
All right.
Um, so I went back, you know, I went back and I looked, you know, I asked a question to read. And, um, you know, how many times, because I'm a board, new board member, so I'm trying to get the totality of what's happened, you know, over six years. So I asked a question, what, how many times have, have somebody approached the board or come to the board or, and, uh, specifically come to talk about Crockett? And the response I got was zero. Um, uh, in early November, we've had so many meetings that it's hard to keep them apart. But in No-, in November, we had the annual, uh, um, forum for, for MISD to talk about all campuses and, and, uh, their academic standings. You know, we provided that to the public. And, uh, so we opened the forum and you can go look at the record, but there was not a single group or person that came to talk during that public forum. There's twenty-four thousand seven hundred kids. And there wasn't a single group or person that showed up to discuss the academic standings of, of all the campuses that we have in Millen ISD. I want to share that with y'all.
Other comments?
I've got some. You know, notwithstanding the fact that we had zero public comment, it is our board's responsibility to make sure that every child has a opportunity to succeed at their particular campus. And so we may not have had anybody at public forum. We certainly have been working for the last six years to try and provide a successful campus environment for each of those students. If anyone is under the impression that we haven't tried things differently at Crockett, as you heard from Ms. Cale in her summary, they would be wrong. If anyone is under the impression that we gave them less resources to work with than the campuses that are not improvement required, they would be wrong. If anyone is under the impression that we didn't provide additional resources to the Cock, Crockett campus through Title I monies and otherwise in an effort to provide a successful campus experience, they would also be wrong. What I have found is in education is, it's easily the most complex challenge that I've ever encountered in my professional career. Just like there's no silver bullet to fix a problem, there's no single scapegoat to place the blame on. And anyone who tries to do so is also wrong about that. A successful campus team is one in which all parties involved are successful making that campus a success. That's true from the school board to the administration, to the academic staff, academic leadership, parents, students, teachers, everyone. Everyone in an unsuccessful campus has a role to play, has some responsibility to bear for the unsuccessful of that campus. Just like when a successful campus works, it's a result of all those folks bearing their responsibility and making a successful campus. In this case, this is the sixth straight year that it hasn't worked at Crockett campus. Not because things weren't tried differently, people weren't working hard, they didn't love the students and they didn't want to succeed. The bottom line is, it didn't work. It hadn't failed. And for me, the discussion about TEA is not relevant to this decision for us. Because for me, and I believe that for this board, whether or not TEA was going to do something themselves, if we don't make this decision tonight, this is a decision that should be unacceptable to us as a board without regard to the threat of what TE may do if we don't close this campus. In my opinion, for the benefit, for the benefit of the Crockett students, and I'm, in saying this, I don't diminish the, the impact it will have on them. I am so sorry that they're gonna be disrupted and sent to a different campus. Fortunately, we have the capacity on the two neighboring campuses that they have the capacity to take on these students. And it's as close as we can get to their homes to do that. And I'm also grateful that, in all indicators, the same indicators that prove that Crockett's not gonna succeed, that De Zavala and Mylum will. So it's for the benefit of those students, not minimizing the disruption on them at all, but it's for their benefit that I'm in favor of closing Crockett. Not because of some TEA threat, even though I think it's more relevant that the parents who don't want it closed hear that. That's why it's such a relevant part of this answer is to say, "Well, why don't y'all just let it go another year?" Well, the bottom line is, the easy part is to say, "Well, TEA's not gonna permit it anyway." But the more important answer is, it ought to be unacceptable for this school board to allow this campus, for these students to go to a campus that for the totality of reasons, none of which ought to be singled out as being the solely responsible, but all of which we have a responsibility for. They need to, we need to close that campus and we need to transfer them to a campus that gives them an opportunity to succeed. That's why I'm in favor of it.
All right. Any other comments?
Well, Rod, I'm still talking about people. And I equate restart with people. Therefore, in my mind, the campus is going to be open again and is going to succeed. And therefore, those students that have to leave or their siblings will hopefully be back on their Crockett campus sooner or later.
All right. But not next school year?
Not next school year.
Okay, all right, just so you understand, okay.
I understand that.
All right.
But I, I still will stick to my premise. Restart is keeping the campus open.
Any other comments? We ready to vote? All right, the motion has been made and seconded for the closure of Crockett. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? It passes. All right, Mr. Jones, if you will, and Mr. Schroeder, if y'all will take the necessary transition steps to make that happen, we appreciate it very much.
We'll do it.
All right, thank you. All right, Action Item Six F.
Mr. Regan is going to start this presentation.
This is the discussion and possible approval of Fasken Elementary Attendance Boundary Revisions and Adjustments.
While our presentation is loading, uh, I, um, just want to, uh, bring to your attention that this is a, a discussion, uh, with the Fasken, uh, overcrowding issue that we've been experiencing at Fasken for, for this year. And, uh, no, I need, I need the presentation on page one forty-two. This presentation in February was brought to you, uh, with, with three options that, uh, staff brought to you to consider, uh, the overcrowding at, at Fasken. And, uh, the initial issue there is that we have a school that has a capacity of, uh, uh, a design capacity of, uh, eight hundred, seven hundred and seventy-eight, uh, uh, at ninety-five percent, uh, capacity. Uh, we have experienced, uh, continued growth in our northeast part of our, uh, city in the north, uh, three forty-nine, we call three forty-nine corridor. And, um, we have, we have indicated with, uh, in our February meeting with the board, three options that would, uh, uh, look at to, uh, solve, uh, the, the, the issue at overcrowding at Fasken. Um, as you can see, uh, by this chart here, uh, I'll remind you that currently, uh, this year, we are at, um, a hundred and thirteen percent of our built capacity. We have six portables on that campus. And if you look at just a, a, uh, far right there, if you look at a continued two percent growth that our district is expecting throughout our district, uh, we would be looking at a, a minimum of, uh, around nine hundred this next year. However, two percent growth does not affect this area, uh, of, of growth in the, in the three forty-nine quarter. We are expecting, uh, with our projections, to have next year at, uh, Fasken. If we do nothing to, to, to stem the, the issue here, is, uh, have, we're gonna have a thousand and seventy-three students on that campus, which is going to be, uh, uh, two hundred, uh, students over capacity, uh, at Fasken.
And how many portables?
At, with, with additional, additional hundred, we'll have another, we'll have another four to, four to five portables on that campus next year. Uh, we, we went through some, some discussions, uh, with our, our current situation there, with our current, uh, numbers, uh, that we started with at Fasken this year, almo-, right at nine hundred. It has dropped to, uh, eight hundred and thirty-two as of, as of January of this year. Um, we see that, uh, uh, we currently have closed that campus to enrollment and we have sixty-nine students that are currently, um, at other schools because we were not able to, to allow them to ta-, attend Fasken. And we have also, uh, reviewed, um, uh, the builder information that is occurring and the new growth that's occurring in the three forty-nine- growth that's occurring in the 349. We've talked to Beaton Bow Homes, we've talked to D.R. Horton, we have talked to Permian Homes. The growth in the 349 area that's contributing to the overcrowding is going to continue in that area. It, it is expected in the next three to four years that we will see additional nine hundred to fourteen hundred homes in the area. At point three elementary kids per rooftop, we could be looking at another three to four hundred children in the next three to four hundred, three to four years at Fasken, if we do nothing. When we look at this, we, we brought to the board in February, three options. The first option that we, that we looked at to consider the growth of this continued growth was to see how we could reduce the impact at Fasken and reduce the attendance at Fasken. One way to do that, option one, was to look at the attendance boundary that is in the 349 corridor and look at rebounding that area to where those children that are in this area, currently in this area, which is about three hundred and fifty currently in this area, two hundred and fifty of those are attending Fasken, a hundred of those are attending other schools by choice within the district. But those two hundred and fifty, we could accommodate at, at the Washington Magnet School. And by adding teachers to existing classrooms that currently exist there, we could accommodate and assure that the, the current students that reside in this area could attend Washington Magnet School. Parents could also have the choice to attend De Zavala and/or Mylum or Peas in this area also as parent choice. The, the, again, this, this action on option one would reduce the student attendance by two hundred and fifty students and, and would give some relief to the Fasken population. Attendance boundary option two looked at allowing the current 349 corridor residents to continue to attend Fasken. And to alleviate, alleviate crowding, we would consider two options. One is to look at the farthest north, or excuse me, the farthest west portion of our district, which is Mission Estates area, this area that's bordered by Interstate 20 on the south, 1788 on the east, Highway 191 on the north, and the county line on the west. There's approximately seventy-three students living in this area that currently attend Fasken. They could be transported to a closer school that we do have capacity at, and that would be Jones Elementary School. Another component would be to take the existing bilingual program that currently resides at Fasken and basically half that bilingual program and create a new bilingual school at Henderson Elementary, which has capacity. And seventy, seventy-three students in that area that's currently mostly in the south of the interstate area would attend Henderson. And then some students that are currently in the Yarborough attendance area would also attend, attend Henderson. Those two options, those, those two items would reduce the attendance capacity at Fasken by a hundred and fifty students. Along with that, we would look at all undeveloped land that is currently in the 349 corridor area, that's in Fasken attendance and Santa Rita area, that fast-growing area, and all indicators continue to lead that this is going to continue to grow in our city. Those new developments that would occur in the future would then attend Washington Magnet or with the choice to attend De Zavala or, or Mylum, or Crockett, or Crockett at this This is option two. Option three was, was a little bit deviation from one and two. The board could look at continuing to allow the, the 349, current 349 residents to continue to attend Fasken with the added ability that they could possibly choose to attend Santa Rita. And Santa Rita would allow us to add another four portables, or four portables to Santa Rita, increase the capacity of that school by a hundred students. So we'd have some options that some of the parents in 349 could attend Santa Rita by choice, by, by transfer. The other option would be all undeveloped land in the Fasken and Santa Rita attendance area would, would go to the Washington Magnet with the options to attend De Zavala or Mylum. The other option here would be that the current bilingual program and the, would stay at Fasken. However, the board would have the option to look at option two, to pick either option 3.1, which would move, move seventy, seventy-three students from the bilingual, or seventy-five students from the bilingual program to Houston, to, excuse me, to Henderson for a new bilingual program. Or look, you could look at the far west Mission Estates and move that group to Jones, where they both have capacity for those students. So it'd be a combination of all those that could reduce the, the enrollment to, to Fasken. However, both this option three will add portables to Santa Rita, and it will add portables to the current campus at Fasken. Currently, we have six portables at Fasken. We're, we're anticipating with this option, we will add, have ten portables at Fasken. And so that was option three that we, we brought to you in February for your discussion. At that time, we elected to go, to have public meetings with Rod and staff to, to share this information with the Fasken family and the Fasken parents. We, we scheduled three meetings with the, the Fasken parents, and we met with the parents of 349 corridor area. We met with the bilingual and the Mission Estates parents, and then we met with other parents, around all other parents in the Fasken family, to discuss these plans with At that point in time, option, the staff also shared a fourth option that was not shared with the board in February. The fourth option was developed with discussions with Rod and TEA and with additional input and comments with staff. And Rod, I'll let you take it, take this discussion from here.
Well, as I said earlier, this was not even a possibility in February, because we were still hopeful that we would see leading indicators that were more positive. But the February indicators were a repeat of the January indicators, and it became pretty obvious that we're probably going to have to make a decision or let TEA make a decision. So that was the last agenda item. With the closure of Crockett, then it became obvious, well, we have a building available. What are we going to do with this building? And that's when that building was then folded into, perhaps it could be an option four, and that's how it was developed.
Looking, looking at option four, what we would, what we would consider is that the current boundary area of Crockett, as discussed at last, the last board, board item, that, that, that boundary at Crockett would be divided, and students from the north half would go to Mylum, from the south, south half would go to DZ. The current site that currently houses Crockett, we could, we could restart a school there. And that discussion of restart has, has a discussion that we can talk about in a minute. However, that gives us the capacity for a school that could house six hundred students. With that being said, we would then consider, again, eliminating, eliminating overcrowding at Fasken. We could look at the, a neighborhood school that would be closer to the 349 corridor area, that could restart a school in the, at the Crockett campus and provide a, a school that could house a maximum of six hundred students, realizing that the startup of this school, we'd have the two hundred and fifty students that currently attend Fasken, along with the growth that we're expecting. So we're anticipating around three hundred, three hundred and ten students at, at startup at this school at Crockett. So that, that is the fourth option. Realizing that the restart of a school will, will kick in several factors, and some of those have already been discussed a little bit, but a restart of a school does require a new principal, a new AP, new counselor. There are staff, K through two staff, that can be considered to be rehired on that campus if the principal so elects. The four through sixth grade staff cannot be returned to this campus. Third through six, I'm sorry, third through six cannot return to this campus. And the principal would, would be, would have the opportunity to hire all new staff from within the district or new staff to the district for, for the teachers in this school. The restart of this school also would, with, with a new school, we'd have the option of a new name, a new, develop a new culture at this school. We've talked about the Warren Charitable Trust, along with Midland Memorial, Memorial Hospital, bringing in the, a culture, a new culture of change to this campus, new cul, culture of ownership to this campus and to the staff and to their students as a new startup. It's the values that Patrick talked about, the values training that Patrick talked about. Rod, do you have anything?
Just a couple of other comments. This would be a small school initially, and the, there is, we would create a restriction of no more than ten percent transfers to it because we want it to be a 349 school with three forty-nine kids primarily. Because at some point in time, you all are going to have to build a school up in the northeast with this development that's going on. So the idea would be, in an ideal world, that this would, would grow until you could get that campus, and then that whole campus would just move to that new, new site. Then you would leave Crockett with, or that building with options for another charter, Magnet School, or whatever. But that would be a decision on down the road. So this would be a small school. The opportunity to start a new culture is rather unique for, for this kind of situation. I appreciate the Warren Charitable Foundation coming alongside of us and being a neighborhood partner, and I want to reiterate, remember, they also want to work with those Crockett students at Mylum and De Zavala. So they're really focused on all three schools in that neighborhood to a degree. How that involvement will take place will be defined later on, but we clearly know that the culture of ownership would be a values theme for this campus, for all students and staff, and hopefully parents. The other thing that I would mention in terms of a small school, just to give you an idea, the two hundred and fifty-one students we have currently going to Fasken right now, that would translate into about thirteen teachers. If we get more, then, of course, that would grow, but I just wanted to give you sort of a benchmark of, of the number of teachers and show you how small it might be. A small school doesn't bother me a bit, honestly, because I, I do know this, that you need to get a school started properly, and that's what we would be aiming at doing on this campus.
The culture of ownership training, the central office has gone through, has been beneficial. We see the difference already. And the core values associated with this training are, are your values, are your values. They are universal and accepted within all cultures, in my opinion. We've been working very closely with Midland Memorial Hospital. They've been helping us along the way, participating in the training. There's one individual that I'd like to point out, and I'd like for her to come up and speak to you about, the culture of ownership training and the impact it made at Memorial Hospital, and the, the transformation that she has seen just with the training the central office has, has gone through this past month, and that's Christine Foreman.
Hi, thank you so much for letting me have the opportunity to just let you know a little bit about the culture of ownership training. The culture of ownership is a movement that gives people the time and the tools to examine their core values, like integrity, courage, purpose. Whether you are at home, or at work, or at school, it is so important to know, number one, who you are, and number two, why you do what you do. Yet we rarely take time to really know what the answers to those questions mean for us personally. Once we are aware of our personal values, putting them into action can truly affect the culture where we live. As the first independent school district to introduce the culture of ownership movement, it is exciting to see the potential that a values-based, campus-centered culture of ownership can have and what it can do at the campus level. While the architecture of our schools may not all be new, this invisible architecture from the ground up, it refers to the people that are at the campus, the staff, the students, the volunteers, even the parents, and the effect that they can have on this campus. All of them would be trained and have the opportunity to participate in core action values and working together toward a positive and healthy culture. This movement has already proven itself by changing the culture of several hospitals, including our own Midland Memorial Hospital. In less than three years, they have seen drastic improvements in customer service, healthcare, recruiting, and retention, just to name a few. Under the leadership of Rod Schroeder and Russell Meyer, we have recently had the opportunity to embark on the community partnership between Midland Health and MISD, and in just under two months, we have trained over two hundred district employees and many involved community members. It is said that students of character can change a classroom, a classroom of character can change a school, a school of character can change a district, and a district of character can change a community. And I'm looking forward to being a part of that. Thank you.
Ms. Foreman, I also want to give thanks to, again, the Warren Foundation and also Allison King. I know she's also been a big reason, the two of you have led this effort in large part, and I know there are others involved, but I do want to thank Allison, Christine, both for all the work that you've done and all that you've offered to do going forward. Thank you.
Again, if we look at the Fasken, Fasken issue that we have, we are looking at next year, with doing nothing in the, for the Fasken attendance area, we're looking at over, over a thousand fifty students that would be attending Fasken. We believe that to be unacceptable. The options that we presented, option one, two, three, and four, you can see that option four would, would, and option one would bring those numbers at Fasken down to an acceptable level. Option three would bring the, the levels down, however, we would have portables at Santa Rita and at Fasken to, to make that, that. Rita and at Fasken to, to make that, that choice happen. One of the things that we did at the parent meetings is that we had, when we gave the presentation, we also handed out a parent information and response card, and we asked for parent response on all options, and we asked them to rank their, their best choice for the, for the four options that we, we selected, or that we presented to them. And we got a little bit of personal information from them, and then we asked for their input, and we got lots of input. I can say pretty much unequivocally, if you lived in 349, you do not want to move from Fasken. I can pretty much, for the most part, if you lived in the bilingual program, you don't want to move from Fasken. If you're in Mission Estates, you do not want to leave Fasken. I can pretty much say that no one wants to leave Fasken. So, you know, the choices of whatever is, is chosen, change will occur, and, and we've got some families that will be affected by that. But, the, the one thing that I can say is that when we tallied the results, we had approximately 265 Fasken parents that attended all three meetings, which represented 113 individual home addresses. And of that, we, we, we acquired a little bit of data as to what the parents felt like were the best options. And when you, when we talked to the 349 parents, it was, it was kind of surprising to us, because if you remember, 349 parents, this is the first time they saw option four. It was new. Thirty-four percent, over a third, believed that option four was the best option for them. Of those 349 parents, we had a split between option two and option three. Both those options had 28, basically 28.5% believe that either one of those options was the best option for them. When we met with the bilingual and the Mission Estates parents, they, they overwhelmingly believed that by 86% that Fasken, that option four was the, the best choice, and if you met with all other parents, they believed that 66% of those parents believed that option four was the, the best selection.
Mr. Rigg. Do you, we have the benefit of this in front. Do you have a slide that shows that summary that the audience can follow on? It's page 154 of our, okay, there you go.
I'm sorry. With that being said, in your packet, there is a whole lot of other detailed information that breaks down every meeting into the first choice, second choice, third choice, and fourth choice, and then, and then the total choices. We can bring any of those up if you'd like to, to share that. But, as you can see here, option three, option three and four, option four, for every group that we talked to, that was the percentage of their first choice selection. Now, we have, as a staff, we have an executive summary that is in your packet.
James, wait, let me, the top box is the percentages of the parents who, who their first or second choices were those options, right?
Yes, first or second parent choice options. We had 34% select option one as, as their first choice. We had 28.5% select option three as their second choice, and we had a tie, basically, the second option number two at 28.5%. Those two numbers, 28, those two numbers, option two or three, represent approximately 50%, 56% of those respondents. Basically, they said they do not want to move. Okay? So, if you look at those numbers. But 34% believe that option four was, was relatively a, a good option for them.
Okay, thank you.
With this data and with review of staff, we are recommending to the board that the board consider one of two options, option three or option four, for consideration to eliminate or to ease the overcrowding problems at Fasken Elementary. If, if option number three is considered, basically, the 349 corridor residents would continue to attend Fasken Elementary with the, with the addition of four more portables for a total of 10 portables at the Fasken campus. Approximately 100, 100 current 349 residents could be granted transfers to attend Santa Rita via the transfer process. With this action, four portables would be required at the Santa Rita campus. The current Fasken boundary lines would be revised in the 349 corridor area, which would show all of the existing undeveloped area and undeveloped land, and future housing development in this area would be redistricted to attend either Mylum, De Zavala, and in, and be able to attend the Washington Math Science Institute. We also have the option, the board has the option, to select either option one, 3.1 or 3.2, which would take, 3.1 would take 73 students, bilingual students, out of the Fasken attendance area and create a bilingual program at Henderson. And 3.2 is an option that would take the Mission Estates area and assign that to Jones Elementary, which there are approximately 75 students in that area. If the board elected to consider option four, MISD could create a new restart 349 corridor school and populate this new school. This new school would, obviously, we talked, already talked about, open a new campus name, principal, assistant principal, and counselors. We talked about the makeup of the teachers for K-2 and grades three through six. This, this new campus would create a new school identity and a new culture for the restart of this school. And then we talked about the culture of ownership that would be an opportunity for this campus. This option of any of the options would provide future growth and capacity, because we're going to, we're going to open with a, a small population in a building that can hold 600 plus, and we would be able to have, house, whatever development continues at 349, we'd be able to, to house those future children from that 349 corridor area at, at the restart school at Crockett. So, it's the recommendation of executive team staff that the board consider either option three or option four for consideration.
Ms., President, I would like to move that we accept option four.
Motion by Mr. Murray, second by Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Riggan about that particular option or the others to be considered?
Mr. Riggan, just to provide, obviously, more information to, to our public, but, I mean, obviously, Midland's growing a lot, has grown a lot. I mean, you know, in, in the future, is there, do you see, in your opinion, more possibilities eventually having to rezone or re, due to growth?
Well, if history has any, you can look back on what we did the last few years. When we were planning for the 2012 bond, 2010 and 2011, growth was expected to our northwest and to our west. The growth at the west occurred around the Yarborough area, and it continues to grow around Yarborough and to the west. There's more development. However, the, the growth through our north, north, northwest has not, has not been built out to the capacity that, that we were told it would be by the developer, developers in that area. When we were looking in, under construction with Fasken Elementary, 24, and we have maps in the back out there, in 2014, there's not a house been built out there in the 349 corridor. Today, it's, we've got 250 students. We do expect, with talking with the developers in the 349 corridor area, and the land that they currently have, the developments that they currently are, are building, they are, and the investment they currently have out there, and future develop, developments that we know are coming online, we are expecting anywhere from 900 to 1,400 new homes in that 349 corridor area, which could be another 300 or 400 more students in three, four, five years. I wish I could predict the economy of this, of this area, but all I can say is, we all know what's happened in the last couple of years. It was not what was, what was planned for in 2010, 2011, and what we built for in 2012. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and, and, you know, the other, you know, the other thing is that there's growth in South Midland.
That's correct.
I mean, because we've had, we have 1,800 kids that have grown out there that we're still not servicing.
We have 1,800, and we've had eight, an average of about 1,800 kids in, in south of the interstate for, for several years. We've, we've had the, the possible need for two schools. Services to south of the interstate is difficult to obtain. That's what's the hindrance on the south side of the interstate.
To Robert's first question, or first comment, yeah, that's a common question that I get is, I'm sure we all get, is how did this happen? How, how did we come to have an overcrowded situation in Fasken? And as you alluded to, we, we got professional estimates on what they anticipated the population growth would be, particularly the student growth would be in all the areas that we zoned, including the 349 corridor. They did their best, but no one, no professional even who's in this business correctly estimated the prolific amount of growth that has occurred in the 349 corridor, a, a growth that is expected to continue at a prolific rate going forward.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
I will also tell you, I had an interesting, had a, by chance, meeting today with a native Midlander, and in the, in the night, this is nothing new. He lived in the no-growth area today of somewhere, some cross street between I and L Street. However, back in the 50s, it was part of a high-growth area north of a golf course, and he said he was rezoned in his elementary campus three times in, in six years at that campus. Unfortunately, when you live in a boom and bust town like we do, these things do happen, and they happen at a quicker pace, I would submit, than communities that don't have an industry that goes up and down like. The good news is, for us, it looks like, knock on wood, that there is reason to believe that this growth will continue, and so, it seems like with respect to the 349 corridor, we need to consider long-term option that's best for those students, for that entire neighborhood, both existing neighborhood and the neighborhood to come.
Based on the knowledge we have today, today, 349 corridor area is expected to continue to boom and build. Yes.
See, in, in your opinion, historically, because this is another thing that I've been told and approached with, people say that our population goes down when there, there's a bust. Have you ever seen that? Because the numbers don't indicate that, but have you ever seen that?
Well, I've been here for 28 years, and you're right, we've seen several booms and busts. Usually, when we have a boom, you will see some fairly rapid growth within our district. And there's only been one time that we've seen a decline in our student enrollments by about 1,000 students, and that was fairly short-lived, by about two years. And then it, and then it, it, most of the time, it just levels out a little bit, about that 1% growth or less, and then it, if we get it into another boom, it starts back up at, and we've seen growth anywhere from 3% to 4% in, in the 2010, 2012 era.
Thank you, because, because that's been, people think that, you know, people leave Midland, you know, but, but that's, that hasn't actually been the case. We still keep growing, or like you said, flatten out, and then when the next bu, or growth comes, obviously, everybody decides, decides to invest, looks like, all at once at the same time.
Well, we, we, we believe that we're going to see a continued growth of anywhere from one and a half, around the one and a half percent growth rate overall, but I believe most of that growth wa, rate will come to our, to our west, and the, will continue to, to hit our Yar, Yarborough school area out the, out west of, of Yarborough, and 349 will continue to be a, a very, very hotspot for growth.
The southern part of the, of the district is going to have the same issue. I don't think growth is going to decline.
We are, we are in a decline right now, and we have not seen a decline in, in, in our enrollments. We've seen a, a small increase of, we projected two years, I believe, two years ago, we projected a, a, a 5% decline. We did not see that. In fact, we saw 1,000 more students the next year.
Well, my point is simply this, the community has got to decide whether or not they're going to invest in new elementary schools to the north, to the south, to the west. That's simple.
And I want to add to what Mr. Fuller said, because I was in agreement with what he brought up earlier, and I think Mrs. Bridges and many of the teachers in the, in the, in the auditorium also agreed with, is that we need to address this secondary issue with our middle schools and changing that concept, changing our high school concept, and I believe Mr. Schroeder has suggested that we begin that process now by identifying community members, board members, teachers, to, to start that process of looking for that growth. And I think one of the things we find out by doing that is, how much capacity do we make available on our elementary campuses in this, by removing the sixth graders and moving them? And so, I think that's a process we probably ought to get started sooner rather than later.
Yes, sir.
Now, keep in mind, community, we're talking about new high schools.
Meanwhile, all right, well, I, I would offer this on this specific proposal, and that is, I think that we are going to have continued growth in the 349 corridor. In my view, options one, two, and three don't provide a long-term solution that keeps the continuity of that neighborhood together. Given all the conversations I've had with the parents, I'm very impressed with their passion about the importance of education. I think there's every reason to believe that if we give them a campus of their own to make their own, that they will own that campus and they will make sure that it is successful. I'm just glad we have a campus available to do that for them. I'm glad that the, the culture of ownership will be part of that, and so, I do hope that we do option four. It, it, it concentrates those students in a single campus and allows it to make their own, and I think that, from all accounts, I think they will be very successful there.
What about the repairs we did to the school? This, we've.
Ma'am, 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 I've had all, I've, I've heard all the comments about the area that it is and the objections. I find that to be unacceptable and irrelevant to our discussion, and so, I think they have every reason to believe that this will be a successful campus, and I do hope that the parents that are most passionate about it will follow through and make sure of that if we, if we pass this measure. Any other comments? Any other comments? All right, we have a motion second for option four. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Agenda Item 6G, discussion and possible approval of personnel appointments. Page 171, any questions about that for Mr. Zachary? Yes, okay, yeah, we'll just make note of that. Any questions or discussion about this? This is an action item. Mr. Murray will recuse himself from any discussion or vote on this.
Are we short or are we at full capacity, what situation?
Well, all our classrooms have instructors in them. Of course, this is the slow time of the year for us to hire. As a matter of fact, we, for this year, we are into the phase right now of recruitment and hiring for next year. So we have all of the HR directors and I scattered around all over the country, starting Monday. So we have very little activity, and for the most part, we're, we're covering the classroom, if not with a certified teacher, at least one who is in the certification program and is degreed.
Any other questions? All right, this is an action item. Motion by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Marquez. Any other question or discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Mr. Murray recused himself, otherwise all other voting board members vote in favor of it. Thank you. All right. It is now 8:42 PM, and we will go into closed section pursuant to Sections 55.071, 072, 073, 074, 076, 0821, 082, and 083. And then we'll have action items arising from that. 8:40, if I didn't say that one. It's on now. We're good. We have to do it over? No. Okay, all right. Mr. Marquez has announced that he will recuse himself from... We're doing probationary and dual contracts first. Okay, never mind that. We are all eligible to vote on this one. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Next is 9B, term and dual contracts. Mr. Marquez is recusing himself from this matter. Motion by Ms. Nicholson. Second by Mr. Kennedy. Any questions or discussion about this item? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those that were voting, voted in favor, Mr. Marquez abstained, because he recused himself. All right, it is now 9:28 PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you.